All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll welcome you to this, our regular meeting of December the 3rd of 2019. We will stand, say the pledge of allegiance, followed by invocation from chaplain Genesee from the First United Methodist Church, and then by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good question. Gracious God, you are the giver of all good gifts, and tonight we're especially mindful of the gift you have given the world in your son whose birth we celebrate this season. We also are particularly grateful to this community that we call Starkville, our home, and we ask your blessing upon our time together tonight. May our leaders be led by you, grant your grace and your wisdom to our mayor, our board, and all those who serve throughout our city. May all that we do bring you honor, may it bring hope to all our neighbors and friends, and may what we do tonight strengthen everyone around us so that we can love and serve each other better. May all God's and all your people say amen.
Thank you all. We appreciate you being here tonight. We will go into our next order of business, which is approval of the official agenda with consented items, and we have one item that is scheduled to be removed. That would be under human resources, number one, the authorization to change the classification. We will be taking that up at a later time, so we'll remove that from the agenda, from the consent agenda, at this time. Any objections to that? Seeing none, we will remove that one. Do I have any changes to the agenda, official agenda or the consented items? Okay, seeing no changes to the agenda or the consented items, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, Mayor.
I have a motion from Alderman Little to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a second from Alderman Sistrunk. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is unanimous. And I will now read the consented agenda items. First, under the minutes, is consideration of the minutes of the November 5th, 2019 meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the November 15th, 2019 work session of the mayor and the board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the November 25th, 2019 special call meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Under board business, we have consideration of the approval of the 2020 City of Starkville holiday schedule and the 2020 sanitation holiday trash pickup schedule. B is consideration of reappointing H.W. Bill Webb Jr. to the Golden Triangle Regional Solid Waste Authority Board for a term ending December 31st, 2023. Consideration of advertising for letters of interest regarding an appointment to the municipal airport board for a term set to expire December 31st, 2019 with letters of interest received until noon on December 12th, 2019. Under finance administration, we have consideration to approve the list of City of Starkville unmarked cars for fiscal year 2020. Under human resources, we have number two, request authorization to hire Douglas Latham as a driver in the sanitation environmental services department. Number three, consideration of the termination agreement and mutual release with Tyler Technologies, Inc. Under police department, we have consideration of application for justice assistance grant in amount of $25,000 in the area of hotspot policing, overtime, and up to an additional $25,000 for hotspot policing equipment. Under the utilities department, we have request authorization to accept the lowest and best bid from Howard Industries in the amount of $401,520 for the 7.6 KV single-phase voltage regulators for the Southwest Starkville substation. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
My pleasure. Thank you. All right, and next we move to announcements. I have some announcements in that I get to always have the pleasure of making new employee introductions. And so we have four new employees this evening that I get to introduce. So this is my opportunity. We have firefighters, and so I'm going to start with our new firefighters. Chief, you've got, we've got some firefighters with us? Excellent. I was hoping, I thought I saw them. All right, we have Mr. Princeton Jones, who's firefighter from Starkville and is a graduate of Starkville High School. He is a graduate of Mississippi State University where he majored in kinesiology, psychology, and education. Princeton enjoys playing sports and is very involved with community service work in the Starkville area. So thank you for being here, and thank you for your community work. We appreciate it. We will welcome, welcome Princeton to the Starkville Fire Department. Thank you. And we will welcome Mr. Tyler Spears. He's from Decatur, Mississippi. After graduating from high school, Tyler continued his education at Meridian Community College where he graduated with an associate's degree of applied science and became a nationally registered paramedic. While attending Meridian Community College, Tyler received the most outstanding paramedic student of the year award, and prior to joining the Starkville Fire Department, he was a volunteer for the Decatur Volunteer Fire Department. Welcome, Tyler. And next, I am happy to introduce Carlos Neely and Raketa Robinson from the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. You guys want to come up, Matt? You're doing the honor since Mr. Logan is enjoying the Seattle Seahawks and Tacoma, Washington, in that area. All right. Mr. Neely is from Starkville and is a graduate of Starkville High School. Before joining the Parks and Rec Department, Carlos was one of the lead caretakers for the Lynx Golf Course. He enjoys spending time with his three children as well as learning more about sports field maintenance. So welcome. And Raketa Robinson is from Starkville. So we got two Starkville folks. Is a graduate of Starkville High School. She previously worked for Mississippi State University as a custodian in MSU Housing. Raketa enjoys spending time with her three children. Welcome, Raketa. So nice to have you. Raketa, so nice to have you. All right, thank you all. And as far as other announcements, we had a really nice Christmas parade last night. I hope everyone was able to attend and enjoy it. The cold felt actually kind of good because it felt like Christmas, didn't it? So anyway, other than that, I have no further announcements. Do we have any board members with any announcements? Okay, seeing none, then the next item on the agenda will be citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for citizens to come forward. You have three minutes, which to talk about any particular item that you like. This is generally not a back and forth or a give and take from the board to the person making the comments. Occasionally, that doesn't always hold true, but just to set an expectation. So, Mr. Turner?
Good afternoon, mayor and board. My name is Alvin Tonner. To the mayor, to the chief, to the fire chief, to the NACP, our president Yolanda Haddick, our, the voice of the community, our citizens feel that they're backing against the wall. They, every time they turn around, they're being pressured on every side. All right, hurts. To the chief, our chief Nick left us a solid foundation, and the people are hoping that we can stand on that and continue. Also, that our 2015, I was with the Civil Police Academy, and that was one year before my brother's death. And 2017 was one year after my brother's death. And the, how they scheduled, we would like to get it, thanks to the mayor that we were able to pull our garbage back in for Thanksgiving, and the dogs were stepping, did not get it. But we would like to know when these hard times are so that we won't put our garbage out to us. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to address the board? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Next thing we have, well, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. So we have four public hearings this evening, and that's actually pretty much the agenda. So our first public hearing is going to be our second public hearing, and with it, we will have consideration of amending the transient vendor ordinance to adhere to the 2018 fire code requirements for mobile food preparation vehicles. In our public hearing, do we have any discussion from the board before I open it as a public hearing?
One question I had.
Mr. Alderman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. I received, for the fire chief, I received just a question saying, is this any more strict on mobile transient vendors than it would be on a traditional restaurant setting from a fire code protection standpoint? Maybe that's something. I didn't have the answer, and I was going to ask him to get the chance to.
Good afternoon, mayor, board, vice mayor. I'd like my, five more seconds today.
It will not be no more strict. If we could apply the bill of terms, it would have been way more stringent to businesses than we'd be as if we adopt this section.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll open it as a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak to the matter of the fire code as it's related to the food truck vendors, the transient vendors, now would be the opportunity. Okay, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Do we have any further discussion from the board? Do we have a motion for amending the transient vendor ordinance?
Somebody.
I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk to amend the transient vendor ordinance to adhere to the 2018 fire code requirements for mobile food preparation vehicles. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Beatty, Alderman Beatty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, the next item we have is a public hearing, consideration of a conditional use 19-10 as a request for a mobile home to be placed on the property located on the west side of Sand Road. Mr. Havlin, Ms. Corbin, y'all are going to take this one?
This is a conditional use request by Robert and Emma Evans. This is a conditional use request by Robert and Emma Evans on behalf of the Starkville Otipah County School District to allow for a mobile home to be placed on property located on the west side of Sand Road, plus or minus .44 miles south of Lewisville Street in an R5 zone with a parcel number 105-16-002.01. The applicant is requesting to place a mobile home on the subject property. In order to construct a mobile home, a conditional use is required per the City of Starkville's permitted and conditional use chart. Three property owners of record within 300 feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of the request. A public hearing notice was published in the Starkville Daily News on November 18th, 2019, and a sign was posted on the property concurrent with publication of the notice. As of this date, the planning staff has received no phone calls regarding this request. Appendix A, Article 6, Section 1 of the city's Code of Ordinances provides five specific criteria for conditional use review and approval, the first one being land use compatibility. The proposed use as a mobile home could be considered compatible, a compatible use with adjacent properties. The property is currently zone R5, and the 2016 comprehensive plan has the area's place type listed as rural neighborhood. Two, sufficient site size and adequate site specifications to accommodate the proposed use. The site is adequately sized to accommodate the use. Three, proper use of mitigated techniques, none proposed. Four, hazardous waste. No hazardous waste or materials will be generated, used, or stored at the site. And five, compliance with applicable laws and ordinances. The applicant is responsible for obtaining proper permitting by the city and state and will be required to get a building permit through the city. November 12th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request with one requested condition, that the applicant shall have six months from the time of conditional use approval to begin the permitting process with the city.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Havlin and Ms. Corbin while they're here? All right, is the applicant here? Mr. and Ms. Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to just give you all an opportunity. Do you have anything you want to add to what was said by, what was read by Ms. Corbin? Anything I would like to add to that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, just wanted to give you that opportunity. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, at this time, if there are no questions from the board, I will open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item now would be the opportunity, either for or against. All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Any further discussion or do I have a motion from the board?
No approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn.
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Little. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda is the first public hearing on the adoption of the Unified Development Code, which is an update of the City of Starkville's official zoning map and the revision, deletion, and/or relocation of several chapters and subsections in the Code of Ordinances. This has been a long time coming. Mr. Havlin, you're going to carry the load on this one for a presentation, if you will?
Yes, I will.
All right.
Thank y'all for the opportunity to present this. This has definitely been a very monumentous task. The unified, or this is just kind of a timeline of some of the public input sessions for the Conference of Plan and the Unified Development Code. For the Unified Development Code to date, because we first reviewed Sections 1 and 2 separately, which ultimately became 1, 2, 3, we've had a total of four public hearings. This would be the fifth, two public input sessions, two work sessions, and we have one upcoming planned public hearing. There are several chapters and sections throughout the code that are going to have to be modified, changed, or moved, and this is just sort of a quick list of some of those sections and chapters that will be changed. I believe in the supporting documents that y'all received, you have more detailed information about specific changes. The UDC is made up of 18 different sections. The first three sections are mainly administrative introduction, then we kind of get into the actual zoning districts, and then some of the development regulations. Section 1 is sort of the legal terminology. It's similar in language to the current ordinance, just sort of establishing some of the rules. Section 2 is administrative governing bodies. This is establishment of all of the advisory boards and commissions that will review different aspects of development cases. 3 is a procedures and processes section. In here, in section 2, just to make note of it, the one board that's been removed from the current code is the Stormwater Review Board. All stormwater review variances will now go to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Once a committee was added, which is the Architecture Review Committee, and the Tree Advisory Board changed in name from Tree Advisory Board to Landscape Advisory Board. Section 3, which is a procedures and processes, establishes the procedures and processes for the boards and commissions to actually do requests, rezonings, variances, different development issues. There are new procedures that were added to this section. One is a review and approval of the use designation for optional districts, which I'll go over in detail in a minute. Special exceptions, use exceptions, which are replacing the current conditional use process. Administrative adjustments, and administrative adjustments are an intent to kind of alleviate some of the variance requests. If there's a minor deviation from what's required in the code, staff has the ability to allow for an adjustment rather than going straight to the variance process. And those deviations are spelled out specifically in that section. And then the architectural review process is also outlined in there. With the optional district in particular, it has significantly changed since draft number 3. The most significant change is the establishment of just one optional district rather than the four previous optional districts, and then also establishing use designations that will fall within that optional district. The initial use designation for all property that is zoned optional will be existing. The existing use designation is similar to the rural neighborhood classification, but with some additional commercial options. And then for the four options to take place, you would have to get the approval of a conceptual master plan.
Let me ask you one question, is that the verbiage, we're going to use conceptual master plan?
Correct, yes. And I've got a, sorry, I've got a graphic of kind of what that is. And those four use designations is traditional neighborhood development, conservation development, commercial, and industrial.
Daniel, while you're on that topic, because we've had a lot of feedback generated over the last several lectures, the four use designations under the optional district, anybody that has land under the optional district, do I understand correctly, the four use designations, they can do any of those four by right?
By right, with the approval of the conceptual master plan.
For any of the four?
For any of the four. And that's what I'm going to kind of explain, is what the conceptual master plan is and why it's important to do that.
Any combination?
And you can also do a combination. It's not just pick one and that's the only one you get. You could do all four in any combination on one parcel, if the size requirements are met. So this image here is a development that's actually down in Ridgeland, and we just kind of took it just so we could show how this could apply to a large parcel here. So to the right is sort of a subject property, just showing the outline of it, pre-development. There's a highway to the south of it, and then an existing access road on the side, and then further to the south is an interstate. And so the image in the middle is what a conceptual master plan could look like. And this is just showing that two of the areas in the orange are going to be traditional neighborhood development use designations, and then the red would be commercial designations. And then the yellow is showing, which is the most important part, is showing the circulation pattern through the site and how that connects to the existing roads and to undeveloped property around it. And the reason that's important is to know how this area develops out in the future to prevent any issues where people are landlocked or you have improper access. And the image to the far right is just showing what this development, how it ultimately built out. And as you can see, the difference between the image on the right and the left is they actually added a access road that connects back to the interstate to better serve this particular development, which is something with a concept plan that the city would be able to do, is to see the need for future roads and make adjustments and plan for those roads and the infrastructure associated with them to go in place to serve the development as it builds up.
Okay, so let's be clear. We're not asking for any detail in terms of how it develops other than access, because...
Just access and just kind of how the uses are working out.
Okay, so we're not asking for...
Because the uses are important to determining the circulation pattern and what that's going to need to be.
Okay.
And those can be, what, rough drawings or not? Have there been surveys required?
Yeah, most of the information that would be needed for conceptual master plan is readily available from the state of Mississippi, from the county. We have some parcel data we can give to people. There's geographic information, there's flow plan information. There's really not a need for a full-blown survey at this level.
So they won't have to go to a lot of expense on just a prospect?
Yeah. A landscape architect or any land developer, land planner should be able to accomplish something like this relatively quickly and relatively inexpensively.
Is conceptual master plan going to require a public hearing?
No. The conceptual master plan, the requirements that we have spelled out now is that it will require notification to the immediate adjacent property owners that there's a conceptual master plan going up for review. DRC will review that, and they're mainly looking at infrastructure, where it's tying in, if that road is tied into an appropriate spot. Once DRC has reviewed it and made recommendations, then it will be forwarded to planning and zoning, where they will make a recommendation to approve or deny, forwarded to the Board of Alderman for final decision. And once that plan's approved, it will be active for two years unless somebody's, you know, got an approved site plan and they've started building, or they've already got a final plat for a portion of it, and at that point, it's kind of locked in. But if they want to modify it in the future, if it's a minor modification, it'll be done by staff. Major modification, we need to go back through the process. And so kind of to show the need of this, this is Highway 12 East Extended. You can see Walmart, Neighborhood Market on the bottom right. And what happened when this property was built out, this is approximately, I think, 148 acres, and it is accessed by three turnarounds from M-Dot. The two of them are seen in this image, located with the red stars. And what happened was the first two projects that built on the extension basically took up the access for that and kind of landlocked the stuff around it where they don't have access due to them being private roads. What happened with Walmart, Neighborhood Market is because they had access here, is that was required to be a public road, which now has opened up the opportunity for development for all the property around it and not have this landlocked situation. When the car dealership here was ready to build, they wanted to draw access through here, but it wasn't possible, so they ended up having to connect to north to Garrett Road at a much higher cost due to the location of that creek that they had to cross. And to apply that to where we have the optional districts, this is just one section of the optional district just north of 182. This is approximately 760 acres, and within this square, there is only two access points. So it's a much larger land area with less access points that could be a bigger problem. So without proper planning as you're making the approvals of the different use designations around these access points, you don't know how that's going to affect the property next to it, how it's going to build out, and it's hard for the city to make a plan to adequately serve it with water, sewer, infrastructure, the size of the roads, types of the roads. And so the conceptual master plan is an attempt to sort of alleviate those problems. The master plan will be approved based on three criteria. One is site and structure suitability. That's mainly making sure that the proposed use designation would fit in the area that they're wanting that use designation. Traffic, that's mainly just where the points are tying in, how they're lining up with roads nearby, driveways nearby, not a traffic impact study. That would come at a later stage if required, but not at this level. It's just looking at where the road is actually proposed to connect into. And then the last is immediate neighborhood impact. These three criteria are similar to what's in our special exception and use exception process that's being proposed in the section also. The difference is, instead of eight criteria, there's only three. Is there any questions on...
On optional districts?
Yes.
Any questions at this hour? Alderman Walker?
Thank you for, I think one of the things that is unique about this is, instead of whatever the existing zoning is, now you would have, by right, you would have the opportunity on any of these pieces of properties to do any of the four uses. Is that correct?
Correct.
You would also be required to do a very conceptual plan that primarily is looking at vehicular circulation to make sure, like in this example where there is no Garrett Road, if I'm looking at lot number, what is listed as 81, currently, the only way you would be able to access lot 81 would be through some other lot unless there was a new road that came that traveled east or west.
Correct.
And so that's the point of the conceptual master plan, is just to see, to make sure that you don't landlock another property owner.
And then where you're making that connection is also important, too. Like, you can see the blue lines are kind of creeks and stuff that, creek streams, large digits. So if the connection point's right there, it could be problematic, you know, if you make the connection point where right across is a large creek crossing, then that would require them to be able to build a bridge when they develop.
For the adjacent property.
For the adjacent property owner. So the location of that could basically be moved or determined to fall somewhere else. So the location of that could basically be moved or determined to fall somewhere else. And then once, say, the person with the front lot has already got a conceptual master plan and they're ready for construction, and the person that owns the large lot in the back wants to come in, they have an idea of where their roads need to tie in. Just gives some order to it and some predictability for services in the future.
And so I would, I would say for one of the things that, because for the most part, the things that are located in the optional district are in areas where there is very limited development currently.
Yes.
And most of the highway infrastructure is the bypass, Highway 25 and then Highway 82 to the north. And there are very few east-west or north-south other smaller collector-type roads.
Correct.
Knowing that as the city develops over the long term, beyond any of us sitting here tonight, it is very likely the logical place that we know where there's going to be north-south and east-west connections at some point are very likely to be the extension of, say, Stark Road, very likely the extension along that section line of maybe where Hospital Road or some of the other roads that hit Reed Road that would likely run in the westerly direction. And so we have some general idea of where we think those connections that need to be preserved or hold on to might be. Beyond that, we're looking at the limitations of where from, where is MDOT going to allow you to have access? And in this section of street, there's, you're probably going to be limited to those two without going through an MDOT process that has nothing to do with the city of Stark.
Right, right.
And so preserving that and understanding how those other connections, I think, are important. And what complicates it is we're not talking about a five or a 10-acre parcel, we're talking about hundreds of acres for many of these parcels that require some level of at least having some idea of how access points are going to work at. The one, I would say, concern that I have, if you read those three criteria, because if and when, and help me if I mistake something, you please correct me, if and when this code gets adopted, all four of those uses are allowed by right as long as they meet the standards that fall under either commercial or industrial or the conservation, they're allowed by right if they meet those standards.
Correct.
So thinking, those three that you mentioned, you said traffic was one, you're primarily looking at, or site suitability is looking at one, and what is the third one?
The third one is, let me pull it up and I can actually read it. Immediate impact, immediate neighborhood impact. The proposed use designation is not detrimental, injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to adjacent property, and/or mitigative measures are proposed to reduce such impact.
So that is, I would say that is the one in there that I think may have some room for either misinterpretation or maybe it's an opportunity for us to maybe strike C. Because when I read that and as through our discussion, it makes sounds like that there may be, that there may be some reason why either industrial or commercial wouldn't be allowed on that, but if and when this is approved, it's allowed by right. Is that fair?
Yes.
And so it may be that what that, what that means instead is if you decide there's residential right above 114, looks like lots, if we wanted to develop 114 and we wanted to come in as an optional district and we wanted to do, I would say, let's say industrial, if we wanted to do industrial right there, then what that would require, if I'm correct, whatever the requirements are of the industrial district would be what the zone or the buffer requirements would be that would trigger for between 114 and that one adjacency. And knowing since that looks like a cul-de-sac in the plan, we are not proposing that anything that's in 114 is going to tie into that existing road.
Correct. And the development standards and the use standards already kind of provide that protection. If there are industrial and optional, then next to residential, there's already the buffer requirements that are very clearly spelled out. The setbacks are even increased if you're next to single-dwelling unit residential-type development. So it is covered in other places, and I agree that that is the one section that could probably be taken into interpretation later down the road and could be used for some revision. The main concern here is just where the circulation points are tying into the adjacent properties. That's probably the most important aspect of it.
And so, and again, I'm just going to come back to looking at this, so we're not just looking at, as the example right here, we can see that that property, that those properties are for the most part non-developed. If I look just to the north, I can see the residential subdivision road coming into that.
Correct.
And so when we're talking about maintaining access, you're really talking about maintaining access from potentially how 114 would be accessed from 16 and to the properties further to the east, not to a road that is clearly not meant to be accessed by other?
Correct, correct. And then the property that's even further to the east, which is not including the optional districts, you know, having access to it, you mentioned Hospital Road, if it were ever to be extended at any point in the future, would come in somewhere in this area and would logically need to come out at one of these access points.
Thank you, that's the only question I have at this point.
All right, anyone else with any questions about optional districts?
On this map, 56 and 81, their northern border, is that, which road is that that should read?
That's not a road right there. The road is a little further is Garrett Road.
Those are just property lines?
Yeah, I was just using this as a quick example.
Right, but I'm just saying those are property lines as opposed to section lines or a road or?
I can pull up the map if we need it.
Is that all, hold on a moment, Carver?
That's fine, I was just wondering if it was Fire Station 5 there or?
If it's Fire Station 5, if you follow the property line here and go straight up, it's right there.
All right.
One more question here.
Yes, Mr. Latimer.
Mr. Travlin, refresh my memory on draft four, does the applicant have appeal rights if he's dissatisfied with the staff adjudication of the master plan?
Yes.
And that appeal goes where?
Mayor.
Board of Alderman. Okay, thank you.
And a court of competent jurisdiction.
All right, anyone else on optional districts? All right, Ms. Travlin, you want to continue?
Certainly. Give my place. Section four is zoning districts and provisions. This is the one that establishes the zoning districts and also does what we're calling the measurements, exceptions, and general rules of habit of building. And that's what these graphics are here showing. And our current code is just, it's not illustrated how you actually take measurements for building height for setback for what a front yard is versus a front setback. And this is just more of a graphic way in a simplified language to sort of illustrate some of those requirements. And in this section is also referring to the zoning map. The zoning map is currently a, in our current code is called out as an actual printed document, which would be problematic as you get rezonings and stuff changes, having to update that map. So the new zoning map will be held completely digital in a GIS system, but will be available to the public on the website, digital format, and for print whenever needed. But the official copy will be in the GIS system. Section five is form-based district. This is dealing with what's our transect districts now. And the big thing here is that the T6 classification goes away. T6 is really more of a downtown, super-urban area like New York, and it doesn't really fit the character here now. And then what we've done is we've taken the T5 and expanded it into three separate zoning categories, T5 University, T5 Downtown, and T5 Corridor. And then each one of those has their own standards as far as building height, size of the windows and doors, or the fenestration requirements, setback requirements, the roof pitch, stuff that would make it fit into the character of the buildings that are already in that district. And then the other big thing that was added to this section is the additional setback requirements, and there is a map showing where these requirements would kick in. So if the lot is kind of already, or the right-of-way space is limited in front of the lot and you want to add on-street parking, you can, but then from the face of the curb to the building has to be a certain dimension based on where it is located on that map to make sure there's enough space in the public realm to adequately serve the public.
Honor Walker?
So I just want to give, as an example, as an example of what that looks, I think that's a huge step in the right direction. So as an example, if you're thinking about Russell Street and where the gin development is. Where they added on-street parking to Russell Street because it was in the right-of-way, and then they were able to meet the setback, which was whatever the setback was, two or zero or two feet, because it was T5, they were able to meet that. And so they do have a little bit of planting area, and then they also have that, what was the minimum standard for the walkway, which is going to be that five, five feet right there. What this in effect does, and you, correct me again if I mistake something, is that in that zone, what that is now going to require, because one of those is Russell Street, right?
Yes, it's a red one, so it's the 12-foot.
Yeah, that's the 12-foot. So that, what that means is even though in that T5 where it says you might have a two-foot setback, if you decide that you want to have on-street parking and so forth, you still are going to have to meet at minimum that 12-foot requirement.
Correct.
Which is going to have you, I think it was a minimum of eight-foot clearance of through space, so call it your sidewalk of eight feet clear.
The pedestrian zone, then you have like the site furniture tree zone.
Daniel, can you show that graphic quickly?
Yeah, back up to that, I think it's actually one of the examples, you can see here in the bottom right, and that's kind of the area in the red is pedestrian zone, the area in the green is sort of that furniture, street tree zone.
So what I want to just be clear about is that even though the setback for that may be two feet, you have to meet this. So it may mean that your building has to get set back further to accommodate that, depending on how you want to address, if you don't have the right-of-way to allow that wider area before you get to that. Is that correct?
Correct.
That may cause some people a little bit of heartburn, but in, for the long-term functionality of those corridors where we're going to have in the T districts, three and four-story buildings, you can't have a five-foot sidewalk with no planting strip right there. That walkway has to be much larger. And so they have to make a choice. If you want on-street parking on those streets, then you're going to have to move your building back farther a little bit in order to accommodate that. If you don't want the on-street parking and you can accommodate all 12 feet within the public right-of-way, then your building can still say it that two-foot setback or whatever.
The basic, base dimensional standards for that.
Yeah. I think this is, for all of those corridors, I think this is a huge step in the, in the right direction. And I think is, I think the way that's written, I think that is very clear and will allow us to move forward in those zones and pull back some of the misses that maybe we've had thus far with that.
And for most of the parcels that are located in those corridors, it's not really going to affect them at all. There's plenty of right-of-way space. It's just for the outlier ones where it becomes problematic.
Go back to your map before, yeah, so, no, the one you just?
Slow click.
You can zoom in.
Well, and just the areas, so the areas, Russell Street and University, and is that Lampkin and 182?
Lampkin and 182 are the 12-foot. The 10-foot is around the mill and then the north-south roads between 182 and Lampkin.
Okay.
And then the eight-foot is stuff around Oddfellow Cemetery.
Darkin.
And then Maxwell Street.
Maxwell and part of Lampkin.
Okay, all right.
Those areas don't really need to accommodate 12 feet.
Right, no, I just think that's interesting and worth highlighting is where those, where those 12-foot corridors and 10-foot corridors and then eight-feet corridors are.
The odds are it's just one or two parcels along this corridor that is going to be that outlier that would not accommodate the dimension that we need.
Okay, thank you, sorry, go ahead.
Section six is the residential use districts. In here, there's different like development styles. The conventional development type, which is what addresses most single-family and multifamily developments. Then there's two or three actual new ones, the compact development. This is where you keep the same density on the overall parcel. You decrease the lot size to allow for that density to happen, but at the same time, you're increasing the open space or the common area that's going to be provided in exchange for that increase in density. And then the conservation development type, which is an increase in density and a decrease in lot size, but it's for the preservation of open space. This one really come in more where people are adjacent to like a floodplain, the land's already kind of unusable or suitable for building, and it's going to allow them to take maximum advantage of the parts of their property that are not within the floodplain, while at the same time accomplishing no development in the floodplain without it being a requirement.
And also is a use designation in the optional district.
And then the last is the cottage court development, which we've had some experience with with a previous application. And this is a very limited use of an infill kind of development style, and it's not something that can be built all over the place, it's just one occurrence within a lot. And it's only in particular places that the lots are sized appropriately. Commercial districts, the commercial districts have changed names, C2 has gone away, it's now just C, C1, which was our neighborhood commercials now, CN, commercial neighborhood. And then there's a new designation of commercial rural. And commercial rural is an attempt to kind of relax some of the restrictions for the rural commercial areas that are sort of located in the peripherals or the more rural areas. And it's just relaxing some of the development standards and uses that are allowed within those. And by development standards, I mean like the landscape standards, the parking standards, the facade standards, stuff like that that can be problematic. Along Highway 12, for example, the new Starbucks looks great, landscaping has finished all the way around, that might not be appropriate at the last parcel down Lewisville Street. You know, it's a little bit more rural in character and it's just kind of an acknowledgement of that. The industrial districts are pretty much the same, those are requirements carried over, just being a little more specific. Special districts are something new. There are three types of special districts, there's medical, institutional, and educational. The medical is mainly around the Hospital Road, the hospital, the supporting doctors' offices. Institutional is anything that is owned or maintained by the city of Stark. Educational is any sort of K through 12, higher education, public or private. It's got its own zoning designation to kind of reduce the need for the conditional use request that we were getting a lot every time they did any kind of expansion under the current code. And as part of that, there are also infill standards that were added to make sure that it potentially fits in with what's existing around it. The optional districts, this one's been modified from draft three. Just showing what the base dimensional standards would be for each of the four use designations. And we've already gone over the process for it. Overlay districts, there's only currently one overlay district, which is the historic, the two local historic districts, and they'll just be illustrated down in the zoning map rather than a separate document, which makes it easier for when people come in for applications and they're wanting to do something in one of these areas. They don't have to live in several different places to find out if their house is in fact in a local historic district. In the future, there'll probably be some other overlay districts added as we move forward in developing plans for different areas, strategies for getting areas redeveloped. Plan unit development, this is something that currently exists in our current code. Anything that's a PUD now that we could find documentation on that actually regulates that PUD as a zone was just carried over, and we just kind of list it in here just for future reference for somebody like us looking it up, you know, where to find that information approximately what date it was approved so that it could be easily found in minutes. Use regulations and use standards, this is where the use chart comes in, which is similar to our permitted conditional use chart now. On the use chart is listed out as four different things. P is just permitted with just the standards of that use. An A is permitted with additional standards, so that's standards that are added on to what's, what's already allowed. An example of that is if you build a medical office on Highway 12 in a commercial district, it's just permitted. If you want to build a medical office in, say, a T district or something, it's a little tighter and there's different standards as far as the parking, building size, stuff like that, so that it can actually fit into that area based on the intensity of that use and the traffic generated by it. And then after the chart is where it gets into each of the specific use, it talks about, it starts off with a definition of what that use is, goes into the parking requirements, the loading requirements, and then the additional standards for that use. Development standards is a fairly large section. It starts off the development chart. The development chart actually gives the dimensional standards or the quantity required for each specific development thing, which would be signs, landscaping, parking, buffers, all that stuff is in the chart. And then underneath that is the actual individual sections for those categories such as signs, buffers, landscaping, addressing. And that is just giving the basic requirements, saying what is a K to be treated, what is a truck, what is a parking space, but the actual numbers and stuff that would be required are located in the chart. Subdivision and cycling, it's actually just the subdivision standards. This is undergone heavy modifications. This is mainly the engineering portion of this project, but what they've tried to do is sort of simplify some of the language and requirements, and they've added some additional requirements. additional requirements. One of the ones you can see is the image right here in the bottom middle, is making cul-de-sacs not the preferred way to end the road, and giving some examples of other better ways to do it. The image on the far right is showing if you subdivide a property, how you're going to have those connections to the adjacent property provided for future development. They also go into more, uh, specifics on the streets, have increased the number of street types allowed, uh, for example, in the rural neighborhood areas, no longer curb and gutter, the street was actually reduced to open ditch at the time. The environmental section, this section is mainly the same, there was some, just the terminology was changed quite a bit. The new sections in here are the sidewalk and parking lots, tree protection, and then the erosion control was slightly modified on some of the requirements and how the inspections are handled. The sidewalks and parking lots, what, what this is for is sidewalks that connect from the road to the building just maintained in a safe manner, so not to be dangerous to the public. And the same as sidewalks connected from ADA parking to the building to be maintained, and then the parking lot itself to be maintained, so it's not dangerous to the public. And the best example of that is the, the Kroger parking lot, when you turn into the Kroger development, there's a large pothole that builds and over time can swallow a car. That keeps getting repaired, because that's actually Kroger's property, the city cannot repair it. So this is just a mechanism to help speed that along, instead of just a bunch of ask, we can get it done quicker. Tree protection's a new one, uh, we put a lot of thought into this, trying to make a fair and sort of balanced tree protection, we looked at a lot of ordinances, and we kind of came up with something unique. The tree protection is only required within the setbacks for the building, so anything that's in with the building, buildable zone of the lot, there is no tree protection, but within the side setbacks, front setbacks, and rear setbacks, you're required to keep fifty percent of all trees over ten-inch in diameter. And so that is to address the public realm, larger trees that are right adjacent to the street can be saved, trees that are adjacent to neighbors' lot can be saved, or at least fifty percent of them. And then here we get really specific in the requirements of how you save it, what the root zone is, how you measure that, you know, what percentage of that can be damaged or,
and account towards buffer.
Yeah, and if, and if, uh, existing tree, or if these existing trees will also count toward buffer requirements and landscape requirements, so it's not like a doubling up. If you save a large sixty-inch oak tree that's covering half your property, we don't want you to plant trees underneath, uh, it wouldn't be helpful for that tree in the future. And then, um, this would, something that was mentioned at the work session is, and we've added into this section, this draft, is that at the time of the inspection of the erosion control, before they get their initial permit to start clearing the property, the inspector will look over the tree protection at that time, and then, then they can be released to do all the work at once, rather than have a separate inspection scheduled. Seventeen's building and housing code, this is really just kind of taking a lot of outdated terminologies out and sort of compressing it. Funny example I like to use in our current code is actually a thing about selling, uh, fuses, it's illegal to sell used fuses, which nobody uses fuses. So it's pretty straightforward, and it goes over the, the building permit process, there's also a contractor requirement process, we already kind of handled it in the clerk's office where they have to get a business license, so it's just a way to track that, which are my bit of software that we're gonna start using in January, that's actually built into that system, they'll track the contractor to make sure their license is current, that up to date, their insurance is current. And then also to certificate occupancy. It's about the actual requirements for obtaining a CO or a temporary CO. And then chapter eighteen is the definitions, and what we've done is in our current code, definitions appear at the front of each section, and then they contradict each other throughout, and so you're supposed to use only the definitions at the front of that section for that section. So throughout the code, we've taken all the definitions, pushed them to the rear, and made them unified through the whole thing. The only exception is in the flood, uh, protection ordinance, and that's because that is a standard kind of ordinance from the federal government, and it has its own specific definitions, uh, we left that in there, and those definitions control that section. Any questions?
Alright, thank you. Alright, um, before we, see if there are any questions from the board before we go into a public hearing, I do wanna say again, y'all have heard this from us before, which y'all have done incredible work in getting, in getting this done, and if you go back to that timeline that you had, and I'm not saying do that, I'm just saying if you take a look at that timeline, you will see how long this has been going on and how much in-depth, um, that you have gone into to make this happen, so I just wanna say again how much we appreciate that, and bringing this to a conclusion, and, uh, you know, Dr. Kim came in on the very tail end of it, but he helped push it along as well, freed y'all up to continue to, to focus on it, so I really appreciate that, and I know the board does as well, so.
Sure.
Any board members with any questions thus far? Okay, alright, well, if y'all will step back, we will open it as a public hearing, and this, in this public hearing, I feel sure there'll be some folks who wanna say some things, so unlike the last two where I had a feeling there wasn't gonna be much of anybody, we have thirty minutes that we're going to allot for this public hearing of this particular subject matter. There'll be fifteen minutes for pro, or fifteen, and fifteen minutes for con, and we will see how that, uh, those timelines lot, uh, align, so if there's fewer, fewer cons than there are pros, then we'll give the pros more time to talk, but as it starts right now, I'm gonna start with those who are, uh, in favor, so those who are in favor, and, uh, Ms., um, City Clerk here is going to keep, keep the time for us, so, uh, if you would, if you'd like to come speak, please do so, give us your name, please, so that we'll have that for the record, and you are welcome to come address the board, being mindful, of course, that there may be others out there who wish to speak as well, so I welcome the first person up who wishes to speak in favor of the Unified Development Code as it's been presented. Okay, so nobody's in favor of the Unified Development Code as it's been presented, alright, well, let's see, we'll hold that fifteen minutes for a couple of minutes here, and we will allow those who wish to come up and speak, I assume not about the whole thing, but at least about portions of it that there are concerns about, so anyone who wishes to come up and speak against, um, then please do so now. You're kidding me? No, okay, no, don't be shy, I was gonna say I'll close it as a public hearing and, and then I'll be hearing from you guys, so.
Good evening.
Hi, yes.
I'm, I'm David Cross, I live Edgewood Drive, and I, I'm not really sure how this fits in, now my understanding, the short-term rental business...
There's, there's gonna be a whole nother public hearing after this one for that.
Just for that?
Just for that.
Okay, so, I mean, but has that been brought, I mean, there was gonna be a recommendation from the planning and zoning, have, have y'all received the updated version, or is that...
We, we will address that here right after we close this one out, so if you, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll let you come up after that, after we get done with this one, okay, thank you. Alright, so if anyone wishes to speak about the Unified Development Code that was presented, just a minute. Alright, seeing no one, well, Mr. Josie, don't be shy.
My name's David Josie, and my family have siblings own property on Twenty-Five Bypass and, and, uh, in, in the optional district, and, um, I sent an email, hope, hope all of you received that and read, I hope, maybe it gave you a sense of some of our concerns or maybe the, the reasons for the concerns, um, a couple of points I would, would like to make, and, and if you have any questions, be glad to help you with that after maybe Mr. Sharp has, has, has spoken, but one point I, I wanna make is just to re- reiterate, uh, what, what others have said, and I've said it before, um, uh, the city planners have done a marvelous job, uh, un- unbelievable, and I've gotten to know the code too well, not just optional district, but, uh, it's real, real clear how much time and effort has been, been spent, and, um, by the way, we're not opposed to the code, con- contrary to what maybe some people think, uh, that's not the case, you know, we, we believe there's, it has considerable merit, it offers, um, some meaningful opportunity for, for the developer community, and I think it's a great thing, we just felt like, uh, there, there were some improvements maybe to be made for op- optional districts, sounds like maybe since we kind of last caught up with things, sounds like maybe some further improvements have been made, so we really appreciate, uh, you know, the hard work the city planners have made on the overall code, but reaching out to really, uh, you know, making the efforts to, to make needed improvements tops your di- district is, is really important, so, um, thank you, thank you both for that, so I'm just gonna back off and, and let Mr. Sharp speak, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Josie.
My name's Jason Sharp, I'm with Brenidi Law Firm, and I'm here on behalf of the, the Josie family and their limited partnership, uh, and I wanna reiterate what, what David said, we're not, we were kind of back and forth trying to figure out, okay, do we go up...
Well, I'm sorry about that, it's either a four or a yes, as we set it up, so.
I know, I know, um, but, uh, I certainly don't wanna diminish what, uh, city staff and, uh, city officials have done, uh, in putting the, the code together, and I especially wanna thank them for being as responsive to us and our concerns as they have been, 'cause they have made a very sincere and wise effort to address, uh, concerns, uh, that we have about the optional district. And so I wanna go back to kind of where we are now and, and where we, uh, will be upon adoption of the code, and where we are now is, is we have property that's zoned, commercial, uh, C2 general business, and has been zoned that way for twenty years, um, and so with that goes some expectation of being able to develop it by right, and, and I heard a bunch of things tonight about by right, which was incredibly encouraging to us, because that's the first we've heard that the optional, uh, uses, the four uses, would be by right, uh, and so, uh, I think we wanna make sure that, uh, we have the same understanding of by right. And by that, I mean that, right now as it stands, the property's C2 general business, if somebody comes in, wants to develop it commercially, they don't have to public notice, publish notice, they don't have to, uh, alert adjacent landowners, and they don't have to have city approval to do that development. Now, they have to have, uh, plat approval, and they have to have, uh, construction approval, and all of the other city approval, but they have the right to develop it commercially without coming to the city. And so after this, uh, they will have property that will be zoned, uh, if it's zoned as proposed, um, it will be zoned optional, and that gives them, uh, the right apparently to any of those four uses, but then how do we get into those uses, and, and the city has done, uh, city planners and, and, uh, Dr. Kim have done a remarkable job in trying to minimize the burden in order to get into those uses, um, and we appreciate that. Uh, the original rezoning process we saw is incredibly burdensome to a developer, uh, and so now our task becomes, how do we get a developer comfortable with the idea of, you have these four uses by right? And, uh, some questions earlier, especially from Alderman Walker, kinda hit on that, well then we look at the criteria for what's our approval process. When we submit a master plan, how do we know that we're going to be able to develop it in accordance with that master plan? Uh, what, how do we ensure that we're going to get our approval that we need in order to proceed with our development by right? And, uh, one of the criteria is especially troubling, because it's largely objective, and that's the third criteria, the impact on, on, uh, the neighborhood. To the extent that we can continue to work and try and minimize the impact of that, uh, I think that, that would be kind of where we wanna go next in our discussions to try and ensure. We came into this hoping to retain the right to commercial development by right, and it sounds like we're getting closer certainly than we were to begin with, and we just ask that you would continue to be mindful of kind of the right that we had to develop it before, uh, the development of the code, right, we have to develop it right now, and the, and, and what we're losing in terms of, of the right to develop it moving forward, and so, uh, thank you for the time and the consideration, uh, our ask from the beginning has been to retain commercial development for that frontage road, and that continues to be our ask, but certainly we're, we're, uh, mindful of the improvements that have been made, and, and I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone, anyone else?
My name's Lauren Bill, I'm also a landlord of the bypass, and I told Daniel the day, he wasn't gray-headed when he started his job, and that's for a reason. But again, I think there's a, we've seen a lot of changes in what we've heard tonight, um, from what we heard in the meeting of the day and, and the plan, and we appreciate that, but there's a reason everybody wants to contain that, that maintain that commercial, um, designation and the ability to do so. I've got appraisal dated, uh, right here in my hand from April this year, and you're talking about property that values five times as much for commercial land versus either residential or, uh, some of the other lesser, uh, productive-type properties on it. I had a question, um, and it goes back to, you know, we started this in nineteen ninety-eight, so we're looking at twenty-one years, we have had limited infrastructure, so limited ability to, to develop that property. We battled two or three mayors ago, a latter district, where they wanted to restrict mass rooftops. Um, we talked about the flood zone, being able to develop in the flood zone, Josie Creek comes down through there and a lot of that property, um, but the city annexed it for a reason, let supply and demand dictate where the city grows, um, I love what we've talked about, the ability to do that, but in our code that we're talking about adopting, or have adopted or what have, it talks about stating that development should be steered to areas that have the infrastructure already. As a landowner of that northwest corner up there, it's very disheartening, and then again, it was annexed for a reason, and we need to utilize that. I hope that what we heard tonight, there's no hidden wording and understanding in that, because we're gonna trust that you guys are, are looking out for us as well as landowners, and, uh, this is, is a critical thing, and we appreciate the changes that we've heard and look forward to the future, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bill. Alright, anyone further?
My name is Margaret Copeland, I'm one of those landowners on that north area, that the land has been in the family for over a hundred years. The last time it was rezoned, we had it commercial and thought, well, maybe this is gonna work out well. I look at the optional as being a hodgepodge that's gonna come up out all through all of that as everybody comes and asks for changes or whatever they want, um, and that bothers me because of the continuity of neighborhoods or, or areas for the city and where you would like to have this and that, so I understand the hard work that's been done, but I see it as opening up Pandora's Box. When you say, "We have done this for the developers, and we have done this to keep people from coming and asking for different things," it looks to me like you've opened Pandora's Box for everybody to come and ask for anything that they want and wherever it is. And in there, it states that you pay a fee decided on by the board in order to come and do that. Now, whether that's been taken out, I don't know, um, if it hasn't been taken out, I think that optional people, if they are rezoned that way, should not have to pay the fee that allows them to begin to use their, um, land in the rightful way that we had expected all along, I think that's very important, but I have no idea what that fee is, um, and I don't know when y'all will decide that fee. Uh, we do see a lot of changes, and this is the first hearing, and how many more hearings would we have? So when I'm through, I would like to hear when the correct, um, thing will be available for the public to speak on it, you know, like so, when does that come? Do you wanna answer that now, or do you wanna keep going a bit?
Let you keep going.
Alright, so I want the schedule, like, when is the next meeting, how much time do we have to read the changes that are done? I think that's very important for the public to be able to see that. I appreciated you so much talking about the traffic, because I watch Channel Nine, and every time Starkville comes up, you can't get up and down Twelve, you can't get up and down, uh, Old Lu- Lewisville Street, you know, type thing, and you can't get up and down One Eighty-Two, so unless you all have some east and west roads that you have looked at and planned for, uh, we will always have just a tremendous traffic problem here, and probably you're all in your offices at three o'clock in the afternoon when school lets out, and you can't get up, up and down Highway One Eighty-Two, you can't get up and down on Highway One Eighty-Two at eight o'clock in the morning when people are trying to come in. Our traffic lights need to be timed correctly, some kind of study needs to be done to make a difference. Getting around schools would help, if you develop and you do, so... So there's some things, when I look at it, have nothing to do with my property, but have everything to do with the quality of life of citizens in Starkville. And that has to do with traffic problems that are here, that you need to address early. Now, they talked about Garrett Road is the only east-west road that there is below Highway 82. And of course, that's limited access, so you can't just get off anywhere. You've got to look at probably extending Hospital Road. There's no north and south anything, anywhere. So that needs to be addressed. If the county hadn't done Poorhouse Road, what would we have here? You know, type thing. So really, look at that. I don't know how you address that in a zoning situation, but looks like that's the future planning that needs to be done in Starkville for the quality of life of the citizens, and you don't have to sit at a stoplight. If you have ever tried to go on Louisville Street down, you can't get there. You can't get down South Jackson Street at certain times of the day, late in the afternoon. If it's nothing more than maybe your city engineers looking at the timing of traffic lights, that would be a help. Now, I want to know the schedule, you know, like, so that we know when to come back. We need them to know when. What we want to read is ready. That's important for people to know, makes me in the paper. This meeting today is in the paper last week, but it wasn't in there today, you know, type thing. So that public input saves all of your jobs, you know, type thing. You need to look out for the citizens. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Copeland. If there's no one else, I'm going to answer a couple of those questions. Anyone have any other? All right. Seeing no one, I'm going to close it as a public hearing. And I do want to address one thing in particular. From a transportation standpoint, while it is not part of the UDC in the sense of the development of the code, it is important, as Mr. Havilin said, in developing pieces of property and how they fit. But what I will tell you is that we are very fortunate that the city of Starkville, October Hock County, MSU, and MDOT have come together to have a transportation study that is county-wide. And we are looking at doing that. Actually, MDOT is doing that for us. They are footing the bill. We have people on all of those, from all of those entities that are part of that. It is including pedestrian, it's including biking, it's including greenways, it's including all the streets associated with it, to look at extending Stark, extending Hospital Road. Garrett Road is our east-west, 182 is our east-west, 12 is our east-west, Poorhouse is east-west, then north-south is obviously 25. If we extend Stark, which might be an opportunity, then you've got 389, and you've got Old West Point Road. So we've got a number of roads, and we need to see how they fit and work with MSU as well as the county plan. So I hope that that gives you some measure of comfort, that we do have a major transportation plan that is being looked at, and we are very fortunate that Mr. Taggart, Commissioner Taggart, and MDOT are going to take that under their wing and make that happen with input from all of us. So I'm very excited about that, and it'll be a process. But hopefully, within 12 to 18 months, we will have something from which we can draw our own plans within the city as well as adjoining with the county, which I'm very delighted about. So to say that to you. We also have had a number of public input sessions, the, all the changes that have been derived, for the most part, have either come from the staff, as they have gone through it and looked at it, or from public input sessions. And there's been a number of public input sessions. Again, if you look at that schedule, this is our first public hearing that the board has had. There will be one more public hearing. In between now and that public hearing, if there are some opportunities, if, when the staff gets together with Dr. Kim tomorrow morning to look at the things that have been talked about tonight, then there will be some changes that might be made. And as soon as they do that, they will put it on the website. Again, it has been available on the website in each of its iterations, as we have gone through these changes. It will once again be on the website. The anticipation will be that the board will be looking at it on December the 17th, which is our next board meeting, and it will be at that time available for consideration and action by the board. So having said that, that gives you, I hope, some understanding of what that timeline is. Ms. Corbin?
I believe we could probably have five, because of the minimal amount of changes that we're seeing. It's just some small things. We should be able to have that available by next Tuesday on the website.
We'll be submitted by.
The next pack comes out, so that should be very good.
Okay. And we will be putting that out. We will put that out via social media. We'll put that on our website, and we will make that as available as we possibly can in between meetings. And if you have a phone call you'd like to make to ask anyone, your Alderman or whoever about it, then I'm sure that they'll be happy to respond. Mr. Alderman?
To Daniel, did I sense that the third criteria that was kind of so subjective was likely to be coming out?
Yes. The main point of that criteria is, like we mentioned, is just how the circulation patterns touch the adjacent properties, did not necessarily.
Well, I thought the third one was like.
Yeah. What I have written in my notes is.
Not appropriate for the area or something?
Right, to remove or revise the third criteria. I have to remove the fee, that's the feedback I've gotten. And then, one more.
We don't have a proposal for what that fee is, do we?
No. It was just, it's just that basic one that's in all the processes.
It was like all the fees associated with coming in and asking for.
Like a rezoning. And then to add the language into the review process, writing a statement that all uses are allowed by right. So we want to make that clear, that all the uses, use designations within the optional district are allowed.
So it seems like those, currently with commercial designations, are going to be have more flexibility down the road with those four options, as opposed to just commercial. And they would have to come in now and ask to change that to something else if they wanted to build a subdivision there, correct?
Yeah. It's just to help develop a pattern, be a little more predictable in the future. So once it starts, we get that first development, that's going to increase the interest in the area, and we have an idea of how that's going to pattern out.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Corbin?
I was going to say, just in conversation, like, listening, most of my concern lies, about the only concern I have left is within optional districts. And I guess from a more standpoint here, and that it tends to be largely objective when it comes to the town. They've done a conceptual master plan that brings the city, and we're really worried about ingress and egress in the future. You know, Starkville's gifted, I think, in a sense, with such a large area that could be developed for years and years on end. So I understand your concern, and then I understand the developer's sides. So I was going to ask the question, as it pertains to, someone said largely, or mainly objective when they come in to apply with their conceptual master plan. Is there not a set criteria of objective that they've got to meet to know? You understand what my question is?
Yeah, like, what I can ask the air on the plane?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I believe we covered that. We checked. There's a requirement for the master plan, is Section 3.3.5.
Do you want me to pull up that section?
I want to spend some time on it, right now, the next meeting. I just want to have some comfort with that, knowing that when somebody comes in. I was under the impression it's more streamlined for the developers.
And what the requirements that are listed in here, just not to read them verbatim, but it's, like I said, that publicly available information, topo, parcel, data, that information used to determine the circulation patterns and the approximate locations of these use designations, just so that we can make the circulation pattern work in the future. And so that the adjacent property owner also knows what's coming and how to anticipate that with developments on their part.
All right. Anyone else with any question?
Mayor Mayrakunis.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Mayor, you've partially addressed this. Ms. Copeland raised a good point, the attorney, I think, from Brunini Law Firm, and may have raised it too. I think it's very important, as the staff continues to develop any changes, if any, to this very involved and substantive plan, to make this available to the public. Because this public input, and the attorney raised the issue earlier about the due process requirements, and this is going to affect all of the persons that are now situated in our city, and those who may become property owners in the future and/or live here. We need to give them a very ample opportunity to have this plan before 5:30 on December the 17th. Do not drop it into their hands until they enter that boardroom. So, you know, we have persons like the Josie family, who's represented by this Brunini Law Firm, Ms. Copeland, who, and her family, and many others, who have a wealth of property here in this jurisdiction. And I'm mainly interested in, you know, I've sat here very attentive tonight, and this is a very massive amount of information, a lot to be completely digested and fully understood. And because it comes down to an interpretation and a lot of knowledge, and I know y'all have worked extremely hard, but I want these citizens who are now here and those who will be here to be given that due process that the attorney was talking about from a procedural point of view. And I want them to have due process, and being able to have an opportunity to be fully informed before adoption. Because we're talking about all these things that you're talking about, the zoning district, the zoning classification, so many new, I mean, it looks like the whole landscape is completely changed. The weather has changed here. And I want them to have an opportunity to be heard, and that's important. They have worked hard. This is a family land, and they have inherited, many of them, from generations. A lot of them have utilized all their assets to get all this property. So that concerns me, that, not say they have not been given that, but as we move forward, I just wanted to, and the reason I leaned forward, I wanted to, Ms. Copeland's, or Ms. Margaret Copeland, mention that, and that's a very, very viable point. It's been mentioned throughout, the attorney, you know. So, but let's make sure we get that, as the change, because, you know, they may not get tuned into the social media, and, but if they call that office, you know, well, yes, Ms. Copeland, it's available, you can come up here now, and somebody will be here 12:30, you know, during the lunch hour. You know, they only need to call here and get an answering machine, and then they got to come back and nobody answers, and nobody at City Hall. But that's nothing negative. I just want to make sure I mention that, because, you know, if you don't do that, then that invokes other legal issues. But y'all have given us a lot of information, and we'll continue to look at that. But I just wanted to mention that, Mayor, and thank you very much. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Sistrunk, I see your hand.
Just procedurally, when y'all make that next draft available, could you, at the beginning or as an attachment to that, highlight any changes that were made, so that somebody who's read it once doesn't have to reread the whole thing, but they'll know to go to 3.3.5?
We're down to such specific changes, it's very easy for us to make, or a cheat sheet to accompany the document and say, you know, this section has changed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Speaking of that, is that what this is? So is that?
That is all the comments that were received on the website during the public input sessions at planning and zoning and Board of Adjustments Appeals. And we have listed the name of the person who asked the question, the question, and our response to it.
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Sistrunk. I think some level of an attachment or something that's also going to say, these are the specific changes that have been made since the current draft, would be very helpful for people to be able to look at that. And I'd say, I think now might be me reading through, and I would also say that, I'm assuming that people are still able to make suggestions or requests on the, through the online portal between now and the next public hearing, so that option is still there.
And the requests we also made in person, made by letter, by phone call, we've got them in every forum.
Yeah. So having said that, looking, reading through the sheet of what's on there, it looks like there's been, there was a request made by Mark Guyton via a letter, and reading what he's requested, and it also lists in this column that staff agreed with the recommendations, but no changes have been made at this time. Having read through myself, I'm comfortable. I think that is a legitimate change that could be made. So I don't know if, how that would need to work, but I would say I'm comfortable with the staff making that change.
If just that change hadn't been reflected in draft four zoning map, it will be reflected in draft five.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, this was not an item for action at this point in time. This was strictly the first public hearing. The next public hearing will be on December the 17th, as I mentioned, and it will be at that time which there is a possibility for this board to take that, take that matter up. So the next item we have on the agenda is going to be, sorry, is the first public hearing on the adoption of the short-term rental ordinance for inclusion in the Unified Development Code. So what we have done, the Unified Development Code was, or the short-term rental issue has been brought up. At the times we were having public input sessions on the Unified Development Code, we were also across the hall, in a couple of cases, having meetings on the short-term rental aspect of that. And so it has sort of garnered its own place in our history and in our, in our development. And so this is going to be, this, we separated them out because the interest was such that we had enough people who wanted to talk about it that we thought it was worth going ahead and letting that be separate. So the short-term rental ordinance is, we have gone through a number of iterations. I think we're on, like, number 15.
17.
17, okay. Thank you, Dr. Kim. And so what we're going to do, Dr. Kim, you've, do you have it, have we got it pulled up?
Yes, this is the presentation.
The intent, okay. If you would, if you would be brief for me, please.
Yes, sure.
Go right ahead.
This is to provide standards for short-term rentals, at the same time, providing specific requirements to prevent the commercial exploitation of these properties. Definition, we all know, it is less than 30 days, and it includes, short-term residential rental include Airbnb, rural home away, weekend renters, and game day renters, recreational building, recreational vehicles cannot be used. The long-term residential rental can, it will be regulated by the state code at the same time. Parking will be limited to what is allowed by the city code, and loading, commercial loading zone is not allowed. Permit application is required by paying $20 piece. This is actually filed from the state code, so this is just the stated requirements. After the application, city planners shall review and approve it, and upon the approval of the permit, city clerk's office will issue the business privilege license. There is a grant powdering provisions that if the short-term residential renters existing owner before December 31st, 2019, shall be allowed to continue without a limit of the number of units. And staff has a little bit concerns about this, because if it'll be adopted on 17th of this year, and then there'll be 30-day, the days, effective days, and then it'll be effective in January 16, 2020. So I would like to recommend the board to revise it into end of January 2020. Any condominiums and apartments legally approved by the city is exception to this. The additional standards exist permit limitations. Any owner of residential buildings on a lot under the same ownership may acquire a permit from the city. The permit shall cover all residential dwelling units on the lot. There was a concerns about getting the permit just to one buildings, not for the buildings they owns in one lot. So staff addressed this. Each owner may acquire up to two permits from the city. The permit will be expired automatically if ownership changes. Of course, commercial signs are not allowed in this. The permit holder shall provide the list of local contacts to the city, so the city can contact them and address the issues that may be occur in the emergency cases. At the same time, the owner shall provide notification to renter and tenants. It will include, permit holders' contact address, contact information, local responsible parties' contact information, and at the same time, provide parking restrictions, restrictions on noise, and the trash collection dates and schedules. And also, for the emergency cases, police, fire, and emergency medical service providers' information shall be provided, and instructions for tating severe weather, nature, or man-made disaster alerts and updates should be provided. There is a safety features required, so smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detector and alarm, and the fire extinguisher shall be provided, and meter fire code. It does not mean that this is overriding all zoning requirements. In the case, in the case, the city receives three complaints with which citations of either court enforcement or police are issued and sustained by a court or governmental or administrative body of competence jurisdiction about a property within a 12-month period, the permit will be automatically revoked for a year from the dated, date of the third citation is sustained. The permit holder shall comply with any and or applicable state laws and report taxes as required by law. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kim. Okay, and this is, this is much like the UDC, we have gone through, as I said, a number of iterations and have tried to address the questions and the concerns that were brought to us through these, through these discussions. So before we open it as a public hearing, do we have any comments from the board? Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Latimer to address this, because there was some legal, there's a, there's some case law that goes with this from up in South Haven or somewhere, and so if you would just kind of give us a synopsis of what you see as it relates to the code.
Yes, ma'am. The, Dr. Kim did a good job of giving you the context about the ordinance with the draft he had on the big screen with underlines and comment boxes. The draft in your packet is clean and strips down all of that to show the text of the ordinance as we have it tonight, and I do believe the text of that ordinance comports with state statutory law within the confines of the zoning statutes, and also it comports with the Bostic case out of DeSoto County, where DeSoto County was able to regulate short-term rentals. So I do think the draft is quote-unquote "legal" and ripe for the board's discussion tonight as a first public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Latimer. Any questions of Mr. Latimer? Okay, all right. We will go through the same process for this that we did for the UDC, which is we have 30 minutes, we'll have those in favor and those against, and I will open it as a public hearing. Again, the city clerk will be keeping, keeping the clock on that, so if those of you who would like to come up and speak, please say your name for the record, and be mindful of those behind you who may have something that they wish to say about it. So those in favor, please, now would be the opportunity.
My name is Julie Vaca. I live in Octavia Gardens with my two children, Ethan and Christina. In tourist and college towns across the country, short-term rentals have mushroomed over the past decade, from the occasional game day rental house to a full-time year-round commercial enterprise, flying under the radar of local zoning laws and blurring the boundaries of residential neighborhoods. Starkville is joining scores of other cities in crafting an ordinance to reestablish firm boundaries around our neighborhoods. The property rights arguments of opponents to the ordinance apply only when a property is used for the purpose for which it is legally zoned. Our one zones are designed to protect and promote a suitable environment for family, appeal to the needs of families with children, and to include properties intended as a dwelling for a family. The safety and security of my family are my highest priority, and it is this that has driven me to become passionately active on this issue. Separate zones for commerce and residence were established almost a century ago, because it was recognized that commercial activity inherently increases traffic and transients in an area, and that that in itself diminishes safety and security, both individually and in the aggregate. The proposed ordinance acknowledges that all who advertise their property to the public on the internet for use as transient lodging, charging customers for this service, are using their property for a commercial purpose. A use for the zone is not established, thus a use exception, requiring a business privileged license. In return for this institu re-zoning, they must accept the legal responsibilities of all businesses, ensuring the safety of their customers and managing the impact of their business on surrounding areas. Since I spoke to you last May, I have learned of eight properties within a one-mile radius of my home that are listed on Airbnb. Many are not occupied by an owner, in fact, one is advertised as non-owner occupied, meaning never to be used as a dwelling for a family, existing solely to be rented out as hotel lodging up to 365 days per year. This is a business with a revenue stream, clearly outside the spirit and the letter of the R1 zoning law. Under the grandfathering provision, such properties will continue to operate, but the spread of further such properties will erode the fabric of our neighborhoods. The two-property limit is an important measure that seeks indirectly to prevent the spread. A residence requirement is a stronger safeguard, and all would function more as homes and hotels with a, with a limit on days rented per year, but these were removed to seek compromise. As noted by Bonnie O'Neill on Edgewood Drive, when we moved to our home 11 years ago, there were no short-term rentals. Now I can show you a stretch of road, just a stone's throw from my yard, where house after houses of short-term rental. We chose our home because we loved our house and neighborhood. The community feeling of the neighborhood is a source of comfort and safety, but that is only preserved if the city takes steps to ensure the neighborhood's stability. Bonnie highlights her final concern that some neighborhoods have already begun to slide to becoming, de facto hotel districts. We see a strong need for density limits and the number of SDRs allowed on a street to address this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vaca.
Hi, my name is Dawn Reynolds. I live in Woodland Heights on Sutter Street. I've listened to the arguments on both sides of the SDR debate. The arguments opposing the SDR ordinance were primarily based on money and property rights. As for the property rights, zoning laws have always placed restrictions on how property can be used. If I want to add an addition or offense to my property, a city permit is required, and this is to protect the integrity and property values of my neighborhood. Zoning also restricts residential zones being used for commercial purposes for the same reasons. For the economic side, is it better for our neighborhoods to have pricier homes occupied transiently by non-local people, or is it better for Starkville to have full-time residents that buy groceries, vote, pay taxes, and support the community through local schools, churches, and volunteer organizations every day? I have spoken to several young professionals with families that have chosen to move to adjacent counties and commute in due to the high cost of housing in Starkville. Starkville is becoming less and less accessible to young families. The U.S. Census data shows that 20% of housing units in Starkville are non-owner occupied, not because no one wants to live in them, but because they are purchased as game day houses that are actually permanent short-term rentals. Again, these units reduce the availability of affordable housing for all in the city. Our neighborhoods, our homes are our safe place. There are things money can't buy, and honestly, those things are much more important to me and the whole purpose of residential zoning. I may not talk to my neighbors every day or even every week, but neighbors look out for each other. When things happen, neighbors are usually, neighbors are usually the first people there for support. I think we can all think of examples of a neighbor being there for you or you being there for a neighbor. I've had neighbors help cut up store blown trees, to small things such as texting me to let me know my garage was still open late at night. Even the small things are valuable beyond any amount of money. The houses in a neighborhood are not just for financial opportunity. Neighbors know which houses kids play, have kids playing in the yard where the pets live. I feel safe in my neighborhood because of my neighbors. SDRs are not just weekend activities anymore, they have become full-time, year-round business opportunity, bringing a constant stream of strangers into a neighborhood. In a recent Starkville Daily News article about how to prevent burglaries during the holidays, Starkville Police advises reporting any suspicious activity to local, local law enforcement. Recognizing suspicious behavior becomes difficult when the people, the vehicles, and the activity in a neighborhood are constantly changing. The integrity of all of our neighborhoods is at risk. The neighborhoods in my area are very close to campus, and the houses are more affordable than in some areas. The initial proposal contained a residency requirement, which was removed to seek compromise. Without a density limit on the number of SDRs allowed on the street, neighborhoods will continue to erode, and those as small as mine can be eroded with as few as three or four properties, causing current residents to leave out of fear for the stability of the neighborhood. Like me, these people who have invested heavily in Starkville, it is time that Starkville invested in us. Please protect the integrity of our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds.
My name is Bert Montgomery, and my family and I live on Edgewood Drive in Ward Five, and we have lived in that neighborhood for just over 11 years now. And on behalf of my wife and me, I wish to speak in strong support of the proposed ordinance to regulate short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. We are enjoying Starkville's growth, and we are proud of how our town has been at the forefront of change and progress in our state, and we therefore hope that Starkville will also lead the way in addressing the growing concern of unregulated short-term rentals. I'm very concerned about the negative long-term impact continued unrestricted expansion of short-term rentals will have on Starkville, and specifically on our lower-to-moderate-income residential neighborhoods, which includes mine. I'm troubled that private individual investors and commercial companies feel that they should have unregulated access to our single-family dwellings in order to seize them up and turn them into what is essentially small occupancy hotels for rent. Such properties have already crept in below the city's radar, and they will be grandfathered in and allowed to continue. The ordinance seeks to prevent the further spread of the properties which will, of these properties which will erode neighborhood boundaries. While some neighborhoods are more vulnerable than others, all of them, no matter how humble or how wealthy they are, equally deserve to have their boundaries protected. I'm speaking tonight not only as a resident, but also as a local minister. After all, we live in the proverbial church on every corner of southern town, and we even started our civic meeting with a Christian prayer. So I feel it is appropriate to point out that according to Jesus Himself, the heart of the Christian faith is being a good neighbor. Seeking the good of our neighbor is what guides us and even restrains all of our pursuits. Indeed, the core of our Christian faith, as well as the Jewish, Muslim, and other great traditions, is that the private pursuit of wealth and profit must operate within the boundaries of social responsibility and accountability to our neighbors. All I'm asking is that those who seek to operate such commercial enterprises in residential neighborhoods should do so openly and honestly, not in secret, not in hiding, and the ordinance will go a long way to protect the investment that permanent residents like my family have made, and to ensure that the owners of short-term rental properties understand they are expected to be good neighbors. Each of you, as our Board of Aldermen, have been entrusted with the moral responsibility of oversight, and that includes weighing the good of the many over the private interests of the few. May it be so.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. All right, anyone further wishing to speak in favor? Do we have any minutes left? Mr. Mullinax, do you want him to speak in favor?
Not much.
Well, come on, come on down.
Richard Mullinax, Ward Five, and I would say that I concur with everything the last three people have said. I wish I could add to it, but they've done an excellent job at expressing their thoughts on this matter. I have a question too, that I would like to, y'all answer if you can. Who regulates all this? And how much does a permit cost? Oh, who's gonna reg, I know right now, say, well, the code compliance officer. That poor fellow, he could right now, he can't even regulate what he's got, but less go to have. If this, I looked today, he's got 116 units available, and I don't know when the last time this was updated, but today it's had 116 units. Who regulates those? Who is the expert? The code compliance officer can't do that. He's only one person. Now, again, somebody meant, I think, a lot of gentlemen mentioned that other companies are moving into Starkville, buying up houses. Lynn, I mean, not Miss Brule, not, I don't get it right.
Lynn works.
Miss Brule, how's that? I notified you today that on the corner of, of
Garrett?
Garrett Road and Old Westport Road, right there attached to a city stop sign owned by the city of city property that we buy houses, call this number.
Should be gone by now.
Well, I hope that they'll all be gone by now, but nonetheless, that's what's happening. And boy, some of these people see a good opportunity, because, as I said the last time I was here, boy, we got a bunch of suckers here, we bite on everything that's thrown at us. So I would, again, ask these questions. Who's gonna regulate this garbage? Who's gonna regulate the garbage pickup? You go leave here on Sunday afternoon after a football game, and so places that don't pick up garbage till Tuesday, that's gonna sit there all week, or weekend. And there's some thing like this that has to be worked out, if indeed, this covers the process whereby the, oh, the housing is approved, housing units are approved, or rental units are approved. So those are some things I think, I think you need to look at, and there's a lot of little things that nobody could even anticipate that's gonna happen. So I don't think they need a blanket approval, as it stands right now, for this particular situation. So with that, again, I think the other people are very well put, the concerns that many of us have. I know that, I look at the ad in the paper, the legislature's put it in the paper, they protect property rights. For who protects my property rights? I would ask again, do y'all have any of these next door, next door to you? Do the Aldermen have those next door to you? Do the Realtors have these next door to them? You know, not in my backyard, I swear, some of this goes sometimes. So having said that, I think I made my point fairly clear where I stand on it.
Thank you, Dr. Mullinax. All right. Now, for those in opposition?
I have four minutes.
I'm sorry?
I said you have four minutes.
You've got 15 minutes in opposition, so, and are you, you're, you're in opposition, is that correct? Or are you for?
I'm for regulation.
Oh, you're for? I'm, I'm sorry, you're
David Cross.
Mr. Cross, you are in favor of the ordinance?
Right, yeah.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, you have a minute and 38 seconds.
Okay. I mean, I had already sent a letter, and I think Dr. Kim distributed it to the Board of Aldermen, so I'm not gonna repeat everything I said in the letter, but I, I did want to make a point that I, I think there should be some regulation that, that addresses the density of these units within a neighborhood, because I think, you know, it doesn't matter if there's only two, two permits per person, it still could build up to a point where it's gonna erode the values within that neighborhood, and as Dr. Mullinax said, you, you need to have a fee that actually addresses the true cost of monitoring, you know, these units to make sure they're, they're kept up to regulation. But anyway, I'm not gonna repeat what I said in my
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cross, appreciate it. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay, anyone else for, because I think we're out of time? Okay, we have 15 minutes for those who are in opposition. If you'd like to come forward, you are welcome to do so now, be, please be mindful of others who might be behind you, so.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board. My name's Yolanda Haddix, President of the NAACP. I have a letter I'm passing out. I'm gonna read what I am presenting. I'm writing this letter in opposition to the proposed regulation on short-term rentals in Starkville, Mississippi. As President of the Octavia County NAACP, it is my honor and duty to uphold the partnership between our National NAACP and other entities. Our National NAACP has partnered with Airbnb to promote travel, offer new economic opportunities to communities of color, and to fight discrimination on all levels. The economical, the economic issue is imperative to consider. These regulations will create a negative impact on our economy. Home sales will plummet, creating a domino effect for builders, developers, realtors, home inspectors, appraisals, lending institutions, cleaning services, landscape companies, restaurants, and real estate establishments, retail establishments. It would also have a negative impact on the second home market in Starkville. This issue is discriminatory. Impose's permit fines and, permit fees and fines on property owners of short-term rentals is discriminatory. The same rules and regulations should apply to long-term rentals also. Governmental interference such as these just adds more regulations on the local level. It creates a lack of competition for weak and visitors, which in turn drives prices up for our tourism and negatively impacts our entire city. A university town depends on the dollars tourists spend to supplement our tax base. The short-term rental ordinance would impair a fundamental right of private property's ownership by making the right to rent a mere privilege, subject to permit approval. It will also treat the property right to rent one residence on a short-term basis as an unlawful business that requires the privilege of a license to exist. The concern about any potential negative impact of short-term rental can be addressed through existing city ordinance. I urge you on behalf of the entire membership of the NAACP, locally and nationally, to oppose this ordinance. And the reason I speak on this, because nationally, we have partnered with the Airbnb, and Airbnb have agreed to give us a percentage of what they make yearly, and have donated, donated to our NAACP on a national level. So with there, we're trying to promote private ownership in our private businesses and entrepreneurship to our local businesses and, and businesses of color. So we do support small businesses, but we do want regulations. We want it to be across the board equally shared. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Haddix. All right, City Clerk, hold the time right there. All right, I'm, based on what Ms. Haddix had to say, I would like Mr. Latimer to address two of the issues that were brought up. One is the need for privilege license.
Will you come back?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna let Mr. Latimer, from a legal standpoint, address one, two of the points that you made. One is the privilege license, and the other one is the 1% regulation, so that if you would, um, share with us the, the need for those.
Sure. The privilege license is governed by Mississippi Code Section 27179, which says every person desiring to engage in any business, if such business is located within a municipality, shall apply for, pay for, and procure from the tax collector of the municipality a privilege license. And if you have less than three employees, that privilege license is $20. So that's where that fee comes from in the ordinance. The intent was just to track state statute like any other business. As far as the 1% tax, that's governed by State Statute 276523.1, and that statute says that if any tax has been levied by a local and private law, which the 1% was, then the term hotel or motel shall include any entity or individual engaged in the business of furnishing or providing one or more rooms intended or designed for dwelling, lodging, or sleeping purposes that at any one time will occupy and accommodate transient guests. So Airbnbs and, you know, HomeAway and all that stuff falls under that statute as well. So the intent was just to track both state statutes.
And both are applicable to the short-term rentals as well. Alderman Carver?
So, City Attorney, you say that because you operate less than three employees in the city of Starkville, that it's mandated that, or it's recommended that citizens should be first paying tax and then, is that what you're saying, based on your...
Yeah, this just, this is nothing new. Any business whatsoever that anybody has in town, it could be an Airbnb, it could be any other business, uh, the city has an ordinance on the books that tracks state statute that says that you need to get a business privilege license, and the fee is dependent on how many employees you have. And if you have three or less, that fee is $20. If you have more than three, it just escalates up for there, depending on the number of employees that you have. So it's not, it's not new to Airbnbs.
Are you saying that the city must comply with that law? I mean, that's your, that's totally new to me, you know, coming into this meeting tonight. So I'm, I guess my question, point blank and upfront, is are you saying that we have to comply with that, and that we're gonna have to, at minimum, uh, make the Airbnb applicant apply for a $20 business, you know, privilege license, and also pay into the tax system?
Yes, to treat that applicant like any other business owner in town, because they are a business owner for the definitions of those statutes, then yeah, that would apply equally to any business owner, including an Airbnb individual.
So you're saying, before this discussion is over on December 17th, that those minimum requirements must be met by this board?
Uh, that's what's in the ordinance now, and you can take those, well, I, I don't recommend taking those out, because they're, they apply as a matter of law. So we put them in the ordinance so everybody would know they're there, but they're statutory. So they, they apply anyway. Yeah, statutory means state statute. Our ordinance also adopts that state statute, so they apply.
Is there any statutory requirements as to the number of, I know Airbnb is pretty progressive in nature and new to the state, but is there anything that speaks to the number of rentals that an individual can have within this town, either statutorily or locally, or, uh, any type of permanent residence requirement?
No. All right. Alderman Baby, do I see you leaning forward to say something, because I'm gonna open, I'm gonna continue with the public hearing piece.
Please, please.
Okay, all right, and, and we can, we'll start the timer when the next person comes up. So do we have any, yes, ma'am.
I'm Carol Gaston. I have a small business in town, and it's my own real estate firm. So I know a good bit about selling, um, to the secondary markets. I wish I knew who all these big corporations were, who are supposedly coming in and buying up properties. I don't have any of them. I do sell, however, to parents who have children at Mississippi State University, and they buy a house for the years that their students might be here. Some of them go to vet school, so it's, you know, six or seven or eight years, and they have a long-term rental. My issue is, why are we penalizing the short-term rentals and leaving out the long-term rentals on this? The college students who live in those homes that their parents buy, and the parents typically buy a four-bedroom, so they can have a bedroom for football weekends when they come, but they have three students in the other three bedrooms. And yes, I live in Colonial Hills, and yes, I have two long-term rentals right down the street from me, where students live. So there are lots of cars, you know, there all the time. This isn't anything that I consider the need for regulation on, because we're a university town. Um, you know, do we wanna grow, do we want to accommodate the parents of the students and the students that are here, or do we wanna regulate them to death? And I personally am not for any more regulation than we already have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gaston. Anyone else?
Can I raise a question?
Hello, my name's Dorothy Watson. I just wanted to address a couple of questions, Mayor Spruill and City Aldermen. I would like to ask that this section of the Unified Development Code that describes regulation of short-term rentals be removed, deleted. This is based on that it's discriminatory. Discriminatory because it does not regulate long-term rentals, and it singularly targets only a small section of the rental market. It violates federal fair housing law, it violates the Fourth Amendment rights, and it targets a small segment of the population. If we're gonna have regulations, if we're gonna have a $20 business fee, then everybody that's got rental property needs to be treated the same. I know we don't wanna, we don't wanna discuss long-term rental, but it's there, it's the elephant in the room. So until we make a regulation of all rental property, I don't think we should select a few landlords to discriminate against. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Anyone else wishing to speak to this matter? Anyone else other than Mr. Buchanan?
Yeah, I'm only gonna raise a question, I'm not gonna add a comment, so I thank you. I think, for those of you who don't, I mean, I'm David Buchanan, local businessman, local also Airbnb and real estate investor. First of all, I'll say, Ms. Haddix did a wonderful job for her comments, and I would echo those for myself. I'm totally against having the regulations, although I'm for reasonable regulation. If there were some reason behind this, I'd, I'd be supportive of it. My one question to the council is, in the earlier Planning Commission meeting and other, there was map that was up here, showing the zones in which the regulations would apply versus those that would not apply. If the intent behind the regulation is for tracking where Airbnbs are located, other short-term rentals are located, the map had certain areas exempted, or where it would not apply. If the intent behind this is to track all of your short-term rentals, then the zoning map should be one color for Airbnbs. I don't care if they're in an apartment, I don't care if they're in somebody's residence, I don't care if they're out by the airport in industrial buildings, because they could literally be there if somehow you turned an industrial building into a rental property. So in my estimation, first of all, I agree with Ms. Haddix and many other people who have spoken today, do away with the regulations, or at least take them out of the comprehensive zones, zoning regulations that you're looking at right now for further consideration. In the event that's not applicable, and you do decide to adopt something, which I hope that you don't, my comment here would be that applies to the entire municipality, that there would be nothing that would be exempt. Because if your goal is to track short-term rentals, it shouldn't matter where it's actually done, you need to track it no matter what, so that you don't have, you know, any zone, whether it's industrial, commercial, residential, apartment, short-term rental, long-term rental, it's all applicable, and nothing would be exempt from the regulation. So if that's the case, that would be my two cents worth. With that being said, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close it as a public hearing. Any discussion by the board?
Mayor, I have one question.
Well, hang on just a second, 'cause I thought, nope, I was wrong, never mind. Alderman Little, and then Alderman Carver.
For clarity, for everyone, the Development Code is a separate matter to be voted on separately from the short-term rental. Am I correct?
We're going to, we're going to have them separated at the next meeting as well, for the same purposes of this. When, when short-term rental is adopted, assuming it is, it will go into the Unified Development Code. If it is not adopted, then clearly it won't, so.
Thank you.
But we'll take it up separately for purposes of discussion. Alderman Sisdrunk?
I'd, I'd like to address a couple of the things that have come up tonight, too. First, Mr. Buchanan, we've listened, and we've tried to accommodate as much as possible many of the comments that we've heard through, through those rather lively listening sessions that we had. Applicability is now one of those things that has been addressed, in that there's, it, it is applicable across the city. Anybody who's doing this, who's operating a business like this, would go through the same permitting process as, whether it's a residential neighborhood or a condo. There are a couple of additional standards, if you're in a residential neighborhood, that would need to be met, but they're, they are, um, small, very small. I would, I would like to say, another thing that's come up repeatedly is the whataboutism of short-term rental versus long-term rentals, and they're quite different. And I think all of you who own properties would, would acknowledge that your short-term rental is very different from your long-term rental, in terms of how long people are with you, the nature of them are different. Short-term rentals are much more transient in nature. Long-term rentals, while maybe not residential in the sense that the, the people who spoke initially think in terms of residential, people tend to be in those for longer periods of time. My neighborhood is one that has a good many long-term rentals. Having gone through this short-term rental process, I, I recognize that there is a need to look at the long-term rental. There are some state statutes that address long-term rentals, but there may be a need to, to modify that and make it more appropriate to Starkville. But having gone through this, this short-term rental process, I, I don't think it is something that we wanna just roll out without a good bit more, um, study, and there's not that much, in Mississippi anyway, there's not that much on the books with long-term rentals. Tupelo has a very robust rental, um, system that, that goes so far as to require rentals to be code compliant. Everybody has to, who rents a property, has to get a permit, and it, it's a much more robust system. I'm not sure that we want to go there, but I appreciate those of you who brought that up, so that we can take a look at it and see if it is something that we need to address. It, it very much is a public safety, health, and welfare issue there. I, I'd like to ask the attorney again, you, in your opening remarks, said that this is, this, this ordinance, as, as it sits before us, is something that we have the legal authority to adopt and act on, is that right?
To vote up or down? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If we do nothing, and, and we have a group of businesses that are operating in a, in a gray area for all intent and purposes, what happens, what happens when there are complaints? When there is a neighbor, much like Bostick in, in that case, what, what happens? What, what becomes our responsibility then, and how does this play out through the future for us?
If the board wanted to engage on that complaint, then the framework would be, you would have to look as a board at the use, 'cause that's what they did in the Bostick case. You would have to look at the definition of use in our ordinance, and you would have to decide, okay, what is that use, and is that use permitted or not permitted in that zone? And you'll have broad discretion in that determination, and use can turn on either the way the property was intended or designed, or the way the property is actually used, and your decision as a board by majority vote would stand up, so long as it's not manifestly unreasonable, which is a high burden of proof. In other words, you'd have a lot of cover under that burden of proof. So that would be the inquiry.
But it would, it would come down to a case-by-case...
Fact-by-fact determination.
And so, for the lady who said that there were eight within a mile of her, we could potentially have eight cases, or for the gentleman, or whomever said there were 116 online right now, if there were 116 complaints that came to us, we would, we would have to make a finding of fact on each one of those.
If you wanted to engage on that issue as a board? Yes, ma'am.
And, and if we adopt this ordinance, it puts us in the position of having some groundwork that we all know what the, the baseline rules are?
That's correct. The ordinance would control those uses, 'cause it specifies what can and cannot be done in the zone. And I, I just wanna make one clarification to what I told Alderman Carver, and it's the same thing I said, but I just double-checked. The business privilege law was enacted by Starkville in 1977, so it's been going for many, many years. And so it applies today without the short-term rental ordinance being enacted, and it'll apply tomorrow, and it'll apply, apply on December 18th, whether you guys vote this up, up or down.
Alderman Carver?
I can ask that question about long-term rentals. I've, I've got a lot more individuals. First of all, I've never received a single complaint about a short-term rental within Board One. I've received many complaints from long-term rental properties within Board One. So it's all news to me about the two, you talked about the statute, and then I have an operating under a business license within the municipality. Long-term rentals, now that we've put that into the public discussion and aired that out, are, are all long-term rentals now have to comply with those two items we just spoke about tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, no, they don't have to comply with 1%.
That, that's right, 'cause they're not a hotel or a motel, but they have to comply with a special business privilege license.
They'll have to do that starting tomorrow? I mean, that's something, let me finish my discussion, is, is in good faith, I don't think that we can look at the city and constituents in the face and say, we're gonna vote on short-term rentals and not vote on long-term rentals, because, um, even though this discussion is led there, I was totally against any type of short-term rental regulation on the books whatsoever, just in making a vote to remove. I do, however, think now that if you're saying that in public meetings, in public setting, that you at least, at least need to address those two, two items that you said tonight, that we must, and, and I think you've been on record as saying that. So, uh, this pertains to, to long-term rentals. If we operate in a do-nothing or operate in a gray area, what happens if we field complaints on long-term rentals and we do, do nothing as a city?
It would be a municipal code enforcement action. In other words, if, if you do nothing, the argument is that you're ignoring your ordinance. If there's a complaint, and the city wants to prosecute that complaint, it would be a municipal code violation, process, and municipal court.
And I'll just say, board-wise, my, my advice and everything, I think we do need to address this more, but I think we need to table or delete this from the Unified Code. Uh, I, I don't think in good faith we can just vote exclusively on short-term rentals and not be inclusive to long-term rentals. Now that you've opened this up, you've got to, at minimum, adhere to a business license for every rental property, long or short, within the city of Starkville. Would you agree with that, City Attorney?
Yeah, the, the, it's not just rental, I mean, it's any business. It's convenience store, you know, taco stand, anything.
Well, yeah, but this is all pertaining to the rental business tonight.
It would apply to all rentals.
Okay. So, I, I do, I definitely believe we operate in a gray area if we move any type of short-term rental motion on December 17th, so, my opinion.
Explain further, I'm sorry. Explain further why we've been a gray area on that? I mean, why would we need to collude long-term rentals in with the short-term rental regulation? I mean, I, I think this, well, I think this, and I'll ask the council on that, but there's precedents where cities have enacted short-term rental regulations without having to, and not addressing the long-term regulations at the same time. That's not, they're not necessarily bonded up or, or done at the same time.
If, if you're asking me, that, that is what DeSoto County enjoined. They enjoined short-term rentals and not long-term rentals in that specific case.
Correct.
You can, I think you're asking, can you do one without the other? And I think the answer is yes, you can. I also wanna be really clear, because there's a difference between a rental property and a rental business, because a rental business may have dozens of properties, and you don't have to have but one privilege license to do business, so I just wanna make sure you understand, if I've got 10 properties or however many properties, I only have to have one privilege license. So just wanna be clear on that. So, any other discussion from the, Alderman Baby?
Now, I'll make a statement, 'cause I've been on this, kinda in this thing from the get-go, and I've had, and people, most people that know and been at the public hearings and public meetings know that I've advocated for short-term rental regulations since, well, since I ran for, for office for this municipal, this Alderman seat. Things are the right thing to do. I mean, I knew going in, I thought the issue had... I mean, I knew going in, I thought the issue had potential to become contentious, which in some cases it had, and I knew who, who, who the likely opponents would be. I saw the Golden Triangle Realtors ad in the paper yesterday, and they've been well-represented at every public meeting. Purpose of their attending these meetings has been ostensibly to protect and defend property rights, but in reality, they're protecting business interests to have no restrictions or limitations on selling property to be used for short-term rentals. I remember when Realtors opposed the creation of local historic districts in Starville. One of the guys had property rights when it was really about their own interest and the potential to affect home sales in these areas. I think that most people in the Greensboro Historic District agree that their, uh, local district designation has been very good for the preservation of their neighborhood. Demand for homes in Greensboro is very high, and I know people who have moved, who've moved there from other parts of town because of the historic district and its protections. I suppose that some of the other opposition rigid to this ordinance originates from the current anti-tax property rights settlement of some residents in Starville. You know, this no-government interference philosophy works well until public services get reduced or eliminated from the lack of funding or neighbors' dilapidated property use of that, neighbors' dilapidated property or use of that property starts to affect the quiet enjoyment of your property. Adequate public funding and regulations then become very important. The short-term rental regulations proposed for Starville are reasonable and less stringent than most that are being proposed or that have been enacted in other college towns in the U.S. Our ordinance would grandfather all existing owners and properties of this type through December 31st. Many college towns restrict short-term rental occupancy in traditional neighborhoods to only primary owner-occupied dwellings. It was mentioned in the Realtor ad yesterday that the language in the city's proposal ordinance had been changed several times. This was done primarily to accommodate existing owners who have already purchased property for this purpose and to establish regulations going forward that would limit the proliferation of this type of business property in older, traditional family neighborhoods. The lack of effective regulation of short-term rental property will certainly cause the further erosion of central, traditional family neighborhoods to becoming business districts with dwellings being purchased specifically to be used as many hotels. In time, it will hollow out our neighborhoods in central Starville where the price of real estate is low enough to justify this type of investment. The central core of Starville will eventually end up with houses that are empty 95% of the time. This is already happening in Octavia Gardens, which has been designated, by the way, as a national historic district and is awaiting the installation of a Mississippi Historic marker in the neighborhood. I know of four short-term rental properties in the neighborhood now, and there will be more without reasonable regulations. Basically, at night, the front porch light is on, but nobody's home. The proliferation of short-term rental property will also decrease available housing stock in older neighborhoods in Starville and will certainly drive up the cost for first-time home buyers in an already expensive market. This will be good for sellers and Realtors, but not for buyers. Big housing corporations now purchase and operate hundreds of short-term rental properties across the country and use deceptive advertising to make their customers think they're renting from individuals. I read that in an article recently. This will eventually start to happen in Starville. By the way, this is a non-issue in South Starville where houses are $300,000 and up. The numbers simply won't work there. You know, if Starville's going to truly be Mississippi's college town and compare favorably with other SCC towns like Athens, Georgia, and Auburn, Alabama, we're going to need to improve our standards. We're doing this with a new Unified Development Code and its adoption, hopefully at the next meeting. If we value preserving the fabric of our central neighborhoods and our city, we need to approve this regulation. By the way, Auburn, Alabama's working on their regulation proposal as we speak. Their public hearing started at 4:00 p.m. today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. All right, any other discussion? Any other discussion?
I do have one more thing to say, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Mr. Latimer?
I want to make sure I'm crystal clear on the point. Alderman Carver, you asked me, is board action compelled from a legal standpoint? As to the business privilege license, the answer is no, because it already applies. As to the 1% tax, the answer is no, because it already applies. As to uses, that's up to y'all. Either you do it by ordinance or you do it on a case-by-case, fact-by-fact basis. That's the law.
Alderman Carver?
I'm going to offer a motion, and this motion is going to take this off of the Unified Development Code vote. I ask the board to do this because of the fact that with what the new information's been brought tonight, I do not think that we can, you know, just like the lady just said earlier tonight, you know, want to make sure we have all the information. And I've just, I think it's too fast. I think, I personally, from what I've been told by the City Attorney, think that we need to have, at a minimum, something drafted that's going to address long-term rentals by use. And I don't think that, I, I just, I, I don't think that can be separated. I think if you're going to address long-term rentals or short-term rentals, that you should also address long-term rentals. I don't, I don't like the way that this is just rolling down just to have a vote at our next meeting in December. So this is going to be my, my motion tonight. Move that the short-term rental ordinance be removed from Unified Development Code as the Unified Development Code comes back for the second public hearing on December 17th, 2019.
So let me make sure, you were, you were asking that we not have a public hearing on the Unified Development Code the next, at the next board meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Just not the, the whole Unified Development Code, but just as it pertains to?
No, but we already had it separated. So you're asking for that one not to come back to the board for a public hearing? Or not to be, not to be voted on? What's your motion? To be, not to be voted on or not to be, have a public hearing or both?
You'll agree for a second?
Yeah.
All right, Alderman.
Because currently, it is my understanding that there would be a vote presumably on the next meeting on the Unified Development Code, and this is not currently in that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
So right now, it is already not in the code? So we would make a vote on that, and then if this passes, then it would be added to that. If it doesn't pass, then it's not. Is that, I just want to make sure that you got me questioning myself. That's my understanding at this point. Is that accurate?
Yes, this is separate.
Okay.
I guess I say, City Attorney, in helping getting this draft, my intention was to end discussion on short-term rental regulation at this time as it pertains to Unified Development Code. I'll go ahead as City Attorney.
You don't want to have a public hearing or a consideration, is that correct? That's your motion?
That'd be the way to do it.
Okay, so that's your motion. Well, let me get, I need a second to that motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
Mayor, can we do that in a, in a public hearing?
We're not, we're not in a public hearing.
Okay.
We're not in a public hearing. Okay. I need a second to that motion. I have a second from Alderman Vaughn. All right, now discussion. Alderman Sisdrunk.
And, and I'd like to be sure that Alderman Carver and Alderman Vaughn and each of us sitting up here understand that the position that you're putting ourselves in by not acting on this short-term rental ordinance, in that these will now have to be dealt with case-by-case. If, if anybody wishes to complain, that's how Bostick got started, right? It wasn't the property owner who complained, it was a, a neighbor who complained. If anybody wishes to complain, we have to decide if we're going to, to hear that and if we're going to act on that on a case-by-case, fact-by-fact situation, which puts us in the position of dealing with 116 was the number I've heard tonight. Who knows how many, how many, how many more there are? But, but it, it becomes cumbersome where what we are trying to do is to give people the, the right to do this without having to come and have this protested by individual, individual cases.
Well, let me see, is there any, okay. Alderman Carver, I see no other discussion.
I was going to say, I don't think the reality is that you'll have 116 complaints driven in the next. I think that the reality is that to date, anytime you do a code and ordinance, there needs to be a health, safety, or welfare issue. I do believe there was an individual that had an issue. I do believe as a board, we feel 10 to 1 calls on long-term rentals versus short-term. I think that's a fact. I do think that while we're doing this discussion, we need to encompass both short-term and long-term. I don't think this discussion is over by any means. I just don't think it needs to come rushed through. I think that this opened up, and even tonight at the first public hearing, from the things I've heard from the City Attorney, it opens up more discussion. That's what we need to do as a city. And to effectively manage any type of business in the city of Starville, I think we, there's obviously more discussion. There is no rush. Let's let the pot simmer, let's let this thing develop. What we do as a city of Starville, and this is a progressive, I thought it'd been, I thought it would be embraced more by our city Airbnb because it is very progressive in nature. What we do as a city is going to be looked at as a precedence like it is in so many other things that the city of Starville does, that what we come out of here tonight will be followed by many more cities throughout the state of Mississippi in the south. It's happened on the smoking ban, it's happened on sidewalk issues, it's happened on all types of issues. I just don't think there's a deadline of mid-December to have this enacted. So again, I already went from a totally blanket approach just to be totally against any type of regulations for short-term rentals, and what I've understood, the City Attorney, there's some things that we're going to have to address, and at the table is not the time to do it. So my motion stands.
All right, so I have a motion and I have a second. I'm sorry?
Did the motion need to be done outside of a public hearing?
We were out of a public hearing.
Okay.
We were good. All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Do we have further discussion?
Mayor, may I recognize?
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, the gentleman from Warren makes a very meritorious point, in my opinion. You know, this whole thing on this matter, on this short-term rental arose just from one complaint. And that's how things normally get started before this board. There has not been no massive amount of complaints. But the substantive point that the gentleman from Warren makes is that why should this board just focus this hearing, consideration, adoption, and attention to short-term rentals? If we are so attuned to addressing the rental issue, let's put before this board, if it desires, a package that speaks to the entire rental market in the city of Starkfield. Now, this is a matter of fairness. This is a matter of equity, in my opinion. I, I do not think that the short-term rental market should be singled out. It is wrong, in my opinion, and it is unfair, in the Vice Mayor's opinion. Now, there were various questions asked to my esteemed colleague from, from Lafayette County, the board's attorney, about, about the privilege license. Well, you know, the language is read on the board about the privilege license, that is already on the books. So again, the other point that the gentleman makes from one is that, and others, that the language here is another burdensome restriction or imposition, rather, by the governing body. It's just another regulation. Already, we have too much governmental regulation. We have too much governmental interference. The government is trying to dictate everything about the lives of the people here in the city of Starkfield. The matter before us tonight, in my opinion, is unfair to the persons who are interpreted as to be short-term rentals, because you're looking at the short-term rentals when you're not looking at the short-term rentals and also the long-term rentals. What I would like to see before this board, all in one package together, let's look at a package that addresses the entire rental market. That's the fairest thing to do. You know, we've heard comments about, about what DeSoto County is doing. We are not trying to be a DeSoto County. You know, we need to do things without trying to base ourselves on another jurisdiction. The question has to become, well, what do we do if we give these regulations or do not give the regulations and have complaints? Well, that is our job. That's why we ran for this job. That's what a court of law does. When there are issues, a complaint is filed, and that's what the judge does. Take each case up and look at the totality of the facts and the circumstance and the law and make a decision. That's what we are charged by law to do. So if there is no short-term regulation and a complaint is filed, then that is our job to assemble here formally according to the law, and we are to have a quorum of our members present, gentleman from seven, we have to have a quorum. If we have a quorum here, we can conduct business and consider the complaints. That is our job. That's what happens in the courts every day, municipal court. Judge Kelly, he's charged by law, if there's a complaint come in, was a criminal complaint or administrative complaint, he should take that up on a case-by-case basis. In Chancery Court where I am regularly, if I need to file a complaint on behalf of a client, I'm going to file it in court, I'm going to get a hearing. And what do I do? I go in and represent that, that client. And the judge makes the decision, that's what we are charged to do here. There's nothing wrong with that. That's constitutional. We are charged to come here and do our job. So there's nothing wrong if we do not enact this regulation. Because all this regulation amount to is just another layer and a bundle of governmental regulation that amounts, in my opinion, to governmental interference. We got too much regulation from the national level all the way down here to Starkfield, Mississippi. Too much. And the esteemed taxpayer from Ward Five, who's had served on numerous boards and committees have asked, "Who's going to regulate this?" That's what he said. I know y'all heard the same thing in this room. You only have one code compliance officer who's going to regulate it. What it will amount to, the answer to that question is, is going to bring in arbitrary and capricious decision-making. That's what's going to happen. But we are capable of hearing that. So the point that I'm going to close on is, why is there reluctance? Ladies and gentlemen, why is there hesitation for there to be an ordinance to come to this board that addresses all rentals? What's the problem with that? Why do we want to single out short-term rentals? Why? We're talking about what state law is? Okay, state law. State law does not exclude the long-term rentals. The law is the law. If we're going to talk about what the statute has been on the books since '77, let's bring in all the citizens who the law applies to. You know, it, it bothers me when we're trying to selectively enforce laws to apply to certain people. That's what I've been talking about for over 26 and a half years at this table. We got to treat everybody in this city right. People may disagree with me, citizens. If you're tuned in, if you don't like what I'm saying, I'm here to do a job, and I'm sure the others are trying to do the same. But I want to say from my experiences, just like I took that pledge allegiance to the flag and I took that oath, I'm going to make sure I uphold the law to be fair and impartial to everybody. I'm not going to exempt no long-term rentals. And the, all the things that this motion is doing, from the gentleman from one, my esteemed colleague all the way down to my north, he's saying, "Look, wait a minute. Let's come to a complete stop, not a rolling stop, at a stop sign, at a complete stop. Put your foot on the brakes, let your light shine, let this come to a halt, and let's come to a standstill and turn this engine off. And hey, we need to discard this, we need to put this on hold, and if we are true about this subject matter, bring us back a proposal that says, hey, we've got this thing right." And I will look at a proposal very objectively, will the Vice Mayor do it? I will look at it, I will read it. If it is fair, if the language is proper, and if it's legal and all-inclusive, I'm going to give it due consideration. So I cannot support this in its present form because it does not address long-term rentals. That's the- rentals. That's the main point I'm making. And the second point that I'm making is, it's nothing but another layer of governmental interference. And the taxpayers that I've talked to, they are tired of all these regulations. Want to regulate nothing but a mandate. Nothing but a governmental mandate. We've spent over half of the, almost going to soon be midnight in a few more hours, and we have not handled this thing properly. That's what the gentleman from Warren is saying. That's a very simple thing to do. All we have to do is direct this department head to, let's go through the process. Let's go through the procedure. Let's get a bill that speaks to both long-term and short-term, and that's what I want to see. I'm not for treating these short-term rentals harsher than the long-term. And I'm not speaking against long-term rentals. Now, I'm just saying, and I don't want anybody out here listening to me saying, well, the vice mayor is so hard on long-term rentals. If you have reached that conclusion, you're wrong. What the vice mayor is saying is, the board should look at a proposal, look at a policy, look at an ordinance that has a very level playing field for short-term rentals and long-term rentals. Let's look at it that way. I'm not interested in what DeSoto County is doing, because I am not aware of anything, in my legal opinion, that makes it unlawful for us not to have an ordinance, and then, at the same time, just like any other code violation, what do we do when there's a code violation? It comes to the board. We got a matter coming to the board at the next board meeting, where we are alleging, as I we have in the past, that some properties and violations of Section 21, nineteen dash eleven, the Mississippi Code nineteen seventy-two is amended. We have violations come to us all the time. We have zoning cases that have come to us all the time. So, what have we done during the twenty-six and a half years thereabout that I've been here? We just take them up on a case-by-case basis, and there's nothing wrong. That is our job. We ran for this job. We wanted this job. We campaigned for this job, and it is ours now. Here we are. We'll be here until this term expires, twenty-twenty-one, unless someone leaves before time. And I plan to be here. So, to the general public, to the media, to all everybody who's tuning in live, live stream, Facebook, whatever you call it, Twitter, cellphone, I don't mind calling. I enjoy this job. And I'm going to give the best of service while I am here, whether you like me or whether you don't like me. If you don't like me, I don't even care. That's my least of concerns, my least of worries. If I say a minute, I say, I'm going to six-twenty Hospital Road, have a good night's sleep when I leave this room. So, the bottom line is, we need to have an ordinance that is fair to the short-term rentals and to the long-term rentals. So, hopefully, all I'm asking you, in this motion, nothing but about fairness. Let's bring in an ordinance back at the next meeting. We can have, we can call for the first public hearing. We can have the second public hearing in the first meeting in January. Then, we can call it up for adoption at that time. And if it's right according to the law, I'm going to give it fair consideration, because that is my job as an alderman and as an officer of the court. And I want to look at the totality of the facts, the circumstances, and the evidence. But there's no way, in my opinion, and I'm not speaking so much to the merits right now, but I'm speaking to the applicability of this ordinance. That's what concerns me, the applicability of it. That's my main concern. And then, the second concern is the governmental intrusion and interference and the governmental mandate, and the government trying to tell people how to operate and run and regulate their property, when we have many zoning ordinances already in place. There has never been a problem with these short-term rentals. It just became a problem last few weeks. I've been here on this board over twenty-six years, and we never had an issue. Now, all of a sudden, the town about to shut down because there are some alleged problems with short-term rentals. So, I know the minds made up. I'm not trying to convince the board. I'm talking to the public now. I'm not trying to convince nobody up here, because everybody, in my opinion, got their minds made up. So, the votes may be six to one, or five to two, or four to three. What I'm speaking to the public to know, we need to do what's right, and that's what we should do. So, we need to support the gentleman's motion for one, regardless of what DeSoto County, I don't care what Lounes County do, Madison County, Rankin County, you can go down to all eighty-two counties. I don't care. I think I have the floor. I'm here some talking, so I think I'm, I got the floor right now. I hadn't yield yet.
Actually, you heard talking from me, vice mayor. There's a redundancy factor in our process.
Well, I hadn't yield. We don't have no procedure here that shuts me up.
We have a redundancy factor.
Well, I have the floor. I have the floor attorney. We don't have no rules. We can adopt some rules next meeting. So, I'm actually, I'm asking, not to be interrupted, but I'm asking the board to less support this motion, as I yield, and this board wants to have some limited debate in the future. We need to adopt some rules. I don't need to be interrupted, but we need to support this motion, and hopefully, the board will support this motion. I yield the floor.
Thank you, vice mayor. Alderman Sistrunk.
I'm sorry.
I just, I have two things I'd like to say for clarity, and I don't think they're going to change anybody's vote on anything either, but the question of who will enforce this, we are actively seeking a second code enforcement officer right now. So, we will have more resources available for enforcement going forward. If you know somebody that you think would make a good code enforcement officer, please have them apply. There's work to be done here. The other is, we treat similar industry, similar segments of industries differently sometimes. Short-term rental, I've said before, is very transient in nature. Long-term rental is more residential. Think of it as a food truck versus a brick-and-mortar restaurant. We treat those differently, and we just, tonight, adopted different fire codes for both of those. So, I don't think that we have to conflate the two. I think we can act on the one without the other, and I would hate to see us rush into doing something with long-term rental, which affects more things, more people than currently would be impacted by what we're doing with, or looking at doing with short-term rental. I'd also like to say to the realtors who are here, I think that markets can adapt to anything, but they abhor uncertainty. And until this is resolved, I think it impacts your ability to make sales. And so, I think, taking a longer-term view, knowing what can and can't be done, really inures to your benefit, and I'd like, I'd hope that you would think about that.
All right. Alderman Beatty, and then we've got, we've got the question, so.
I just wanted to say, follow up on this thing. First of all, we've been discussing this for three months. Second thing is, by all the discussion I've heard on this board tonight and comments and things, whose interest are we protecting, representing? Realtors? Real estate investors? What about the homeowners that want to maintain the integrity of their neighborhoods? They're important, too, particularly in these older central neighborhoods where this stuff's being bought. This is a new phenomenon. These Airbnb's short-term rental properties are proliferating in Starkville and other particular college towns and resort destinations and places. And it's something we've got to, I think that we would be remiss if we did not do our part, or do what we're supposed to do, our due diligence as a city board, to regulate these things. And the other statement I would make is, I want to know where my colleagues were when we were having all these hearings and all these public sessions and all these input sessions out at the, at Sportsplex and one up here. There was a lot of information that was had and said and information disseminated on both sides in those meetings that would have been valuable information for board members to know about, to make a more informed decision tonight about whether or not to go forward with regulating these short-term I still will say this. Doing nothing, putting it off, is just putting off the inevitable. We need to regulate short-term rentals. I'd hate for us, five, ten years from now, to look back, or ten to fifteen years now, to look back, and it may be inevitable, but to see are these neighborhoods in these older parts of town hollowed out from what's going to happen with short-term rental properties as they're bought up and turned into this. I mean, I'd hate for us to think that we had an opportunity to do something on the front end, to put some reasonable regulation into place, to maintain our city, the core of our city, and we didn't do it. Mayor, you yield. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Little, you haven't spoken.
Yeah. I'd just like to say, I appreciate everyone's comments, both pro and con. I had no idea that we'd be voting on this matter tonight, up or down. It's not something that I've really personally had complaints on. I think there is one, just a few houses down the road from me I've become aware of since this conversation's been had. The calls that I typically have gotten over the last six years, six and a half years, are on the long-term rentals. And I do not disagree that if we're going to look at, look at the short-term, we need to look comprehensively and look at the long-term rental as well, and bring them both back together to be considered as a package at that point, when the time comes. I am also concerned that we're looking to grow the government. Fees, if we're talking about one hundred and sixteen units, we're only talking about twenty-four hundred dollars roughly in twenty-dollar fees, not to mention extra with the motel fees that would be on top of that, but that's certainly not going to pay or justify a growing the government or trying to hire someone to help police this, and I think that's going to be very difficult to, we've got several laws on the books now as it sits that aren't enforced, and I see some difficulty there. And city attorney, let me ask you, or Dr. Kim, maybe answer this. If someone is operating, which I would call this a business use, if they're renting their house out in a neighborhood that's R1, and a neighbor complains, they're running a business there, where would we stand from an enforcement standpoint?
There has to be an initial interpretation made by staff about whether that is a commercial use or a residential use. And again, that can turn on the way the property was constructed or the way the property is actually being used. And then, if that person was aggrieved by that staff opinion, it would go up the chain. There would be two paths, conceivably to me. One would be municipal court. The other would be before you guys.
So, if someone's operating a beauty shop in their home, that's clearly a business or generating revenue. People are coming and going. Similarly, if they're operating a hotel at their home, people are coming and going and paying a fee to stay there. To me, I would suspect that would be considered a business, but they would make the complaint, and then it would come to us to, if it was a serious enough issue that they don't want it next door to them, they would bring it. We have to make a decision at that point. Is that right?
Based on the facts and circumstances of that case. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
But also, let's be clear that the twenty dollars will still apply to anybody who's renting a room. It doesn't matter if, the privilege license still remains the twenty dollars, whether there's a complaint or not. It's a twenty-dollar fee if you're conducting a business, which the Airbnb would be.
Short-term rental and long-term rentals.
Okay.
And if I may add...
We've had a full discussion. We have a motion and a second. Let's go. Alderman Vaughn.
Can somebody please repeat the motion?
The motion is to pull the short-term rental from consideration at the next board meeting.
And I do have another comment.
Okay. Will you have a little less comment about your motion?
No, I just had more comments. I wouldn't have, I mean, y'all are discussing. Let me just say this. The discussion tonight was never to be really pertaining to the difference between short and long-term rentals. It's just to make sure we talk about all inclusively at one time. But, you know, you talk about transient, you know, people, short-term rental tend to be more transient. Well, in my opinion, what I've learned is, there's more transient people that come and go through a long-term rental house than there are a short-term rental house, because typically, if you have a short-term rental property, in my opinion, those are based off reviews versus a long-term rental. A lot of times, when you go to an apartment owner, or a manager, or someone who owns many houses that we're in fear of right now of renting them out, you go and they place you where they want to place you. You don't go pick your apartment out. They tell you where to go to. You may have a choice on a level of floor, but other than that, they pick your, pick your location. So, if you've got a short-term rental, you have to keep that up to a certain standard. It's based on reviews. It's different than a long-term rental. Somebody, I know individuals that own many homes, let's say, in certain neighborhoods in town, but it has to be kept up to a certain standard. Oftentimes, I personally rent my house out, maybe three weekends a year, four weekends last year. It's based on reviews. So, if the person that stayed there before didn't like it, I may not get a repeat customer. I may not, long-term rentals, oftentimes, and this is my situation I face in Ward One, is there's three properties in a row, and I can almost always tell you who the short-term rental property is. They have to keep it up to a certain standard that, now you're not even going to know it's a rental. It's not going to have complaints from many cars coming and going, and it's got less cars on a day-to-day basis than a long-term rental. Again, it's kept up based on reviews, because of the nature of the business, it has to be kept up to a pretty much meticulous standard. They get weekly cleaning, where long-term rentals don't. They get weekly lawn care, where long-term rentals often don't. And so, I would say, if we're going to discuss, let's just encompass all of it. This is not, now, the individuals here that are in favor of short-term rentals, you may hate me, in a couple of months, when they say, because as of tonight, from what I understand from the city attorney, there's got to be some type of regulation in this business, both short and long-term rentals. I don't think it's fair that you target one without targeting the other, or addressing one without addressing the other. So, in my opinion, like I said, there's going to be something, I personally went from just all-inclusively, or just didn't want to discuss it whatsoever, to think there needs to be some type of regulation of both. So, there's got to be some middle ground, I think, through all of this. Again, Starkville's a leading town, and the discussion, as it usually does inside this town, can get heated at times. I think that individuals kept their poise from all of the meetings, and so, again, this is something that I think we need to just sit by table, have a discussion. There's obviously long-term rentals. This is a college town. We have issues that we, that we face here as a town that many municipalities in the state don't face, but obviously, I think everybody in this room would agree that there's definitely a market for long-term rentals, and we've got to discuss that.
Please tell me you're calling for a vote.
Mayor, we got a motion. We got a second. Please, let's vote.
Thank you.
Call, ma'am, I do have to clarify one statement, Alderman Carver. I'm not saying that additional regulation is compelled. That is up to you guys.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. If you would, answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Nay.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right. By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. We will not be taking this matter up on December seventeenth. We will be bringing it back at some point, along with the long-term rentals. So, all right. That now concludes our business. I have one thing to read, and I will, oh, claim stock, I'm sorry.
You got a claim.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the claim stock? I have a motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Vaughn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. So, we have, by a vote of five to two...
Four to three.
Four to three. Excuse me. A motion.
Who voted against it?
We might want to clear that up, because I think Alderman Vaughn's second in that motion.
Yeah, he can still vote against it.
Okay, perfect.
All right. So, by a vote of four to three, Alderman Sistrunk.
Okay.
By a vote of four to three, the motion carries. Okay. Claims document is approved. Now, I need to read this, and then we will have a, okay, all right. In accordance with a notice as required under Mississippi Code annotated twenty-five forty-one thirteen, the board will be having a budget work session on the thirteenth of December twenty nineteen at one fifteen P.M. That meeting will be held at City Hall in the second-floor conference room located at one-ten West Street. The public and media are invited to attend. Notice should be provided to this work session within one hour of this meeting by posting such notice at City Hall. The notice of the work session should be made a part of the minutes. The work session will be open. Public meeting of the city of Starkville. The public and press are invited to attend, and Vice Mayor Perkins will be the presiding officer of that meeting.
I mean, I look forward to it, ma'am.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, having said that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Recession, recess, excuse me. I have a motion from Alderman Little to recess. Alderman Vaughn, was that a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Vaughn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? We are in recess. Thank you, everyone.